On deck.
Hang on, let me just get into the meeting first. Can someone call Colby for me?
Recording in progress.
No, thank you.
Good to go.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Very good. And so, for those just tuning in on the Zoom link and in person, we're finishing our Board of Trustees meeting for the Health Center and Community Mental Health Center. Then we'll jump into our usual Commissioners' agenda. So right now, we're going to go into a Community Mental Health Center budget presentation. And I'll hand it off here to Randy.
That one right there?
Yes.
Just arrow.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Guests. My name is Randy Walther, in case you don't recognize me. And I am the Finance and Contracts Analyst for the Community Mental Health Center. And the Chair Commissioner Garcia has asked us to provide some budget walks for this year, but then also give us, give a rundown of maybe the last three or four years. So I will gladly do that. Our first slide here today is an overview of our 25-26 request. So you can see at the far right column, our proposed budget was $23,077,000, and that was within our given target. Just a slight, approximately 1.5% increase year-over-year from 2024-25. And we'll get into, in some further slides, we'll get into the, how that was calculated. So on that overview of the 25-26 request, our total headcount is about stable at 157. Those are, those are total, our FTEs are approximately 125 of that, 157. And that's been consistent throughout the last three or four years, give or take. Our revenues are in line with our, actually with the expenses that we take on. So if we increase our expenses for the year approximately 4%, 4.5%, we, we look at our revenues and we try to deliver the same so that we're not, so that we're covering our expenses for the year. And that, we increased to $11.2 million from $10.7. And of that, the revenues, Region 6 funding is approximately 1.6 million of the 11. The other is 6.5 million, non-pharmacy-related expenses. And then, of course, the pharmacy is the 3.1 million. And that's consistently been increasing year-over-year. I've included it in this year's budget walk. In the past, it was, was in Didi's explanations there. But, so a significant, probably a third of our revenue is from the pharmacy part. Switch to the next slide here. Commissioner Chair Garcia had asked for budgetary growth from 2022 to 2026. And just real brief, high-level, our expenses, as I mentioned, we experienced a 1.5% change, increase, which was the target. And the reason why, so overall, the five years, expenses averaged about 4.5% year-over-year, which is about where the target has been. And we've maintained that budget year-over-year. As you break those expenses out, I have in the next three rows there, our personnel, which include benefits, has, is 15 million of the 23 million, and only had just under 1% increase. And the reason for that is, as I noted on the slide there, the county did not increase the budgeted benefits year-over-year for, for all departments. So that being part of personnel expenses allowed it to be, to bring down the overall cost of, for our budget, down to 1.5%. As Didi had mentioned, our shared services, back to DCHC, remained at 6 million year-over-year. So the difference would be other non-personnel expenses with a slight increase there of about 200,000. It's just pretty much the balance of the, the target. So targets are the same for non-personnel and personnel expenses. So, so overall, we're within target year-over-year. Some of the changes from '22 to '26, I highlighted. In '23, we, of course, we all had that, we were dealing with higher nursing, nursing shortage, and we, we had to increase our, our personnel costs for that, as well as we had a slight increase in our shared services. As Didi had mentioned, year-over-year, we started the '22 campaign budgeting around 4.2, 4.3 million for CMHC as part of the DCHC, and has increased over the, over the four years to 6 million. And, and that's, that's been managed quite well year-over-year. But there, there was an increase in our part there, so. And then the personnel and benefits expenses have been managed year-over-year within line of the target. As you'll see in subsequent, subsequent slides, we have been very successful in managing our expenses budget year-over-year. We've come in under budget all, all the last four years. And that, of course, helps with the investment or the cost to the county. We've also managed to meet or exceed our revenue targets year-over-year. And so the next slide is how we, our actual expenses to budget, as I was alluding to. The top line in expenses shows that in our current year budget, fiscal year '25, to the estimated where we're going to end up in '25 actual, we're about 800,000. And this is, of course, post, post-incumbrances. But 800,000 under budget for expenses at 21.9. It's a 3.6% benefit. In other expenses, we had a slight, slight increase of about 100,000 there. And then, of course, our shared services did not change. Our revenue, I projected to come in at or a little bit below budget. There are a number of reasons for that, but it's pretty, it's pretty close at 10.6 million, which means the estimated charge to the, or the county subsidy for this current year would be 11.3 million, which is approximately about 50% the county is covering. Those services provided by CMHC in comparison to our budget. And as you can see, over the course of the four years that I've shown here, we've managed to show a trend line for expenses, like I had mentioned before, favorable across the board, with the biggest coming this year, 200,000, 100,000, 600,000, then 800,000. The shared services, we did have some increases, as I mentioned, but we've been flat the last, the last year. And our revenue has slightly increased over the course of the four years, primarily because of the consistency of the pharmacy revenue, which has been, starting in '22, was about 2.8 million, 2.7 million. And now we expect the revenue from pharmacy alone to come in at about 3.5 million for this year. So, so mostly, so basically, that infers that our, our collections for all other services has been pretty consistent with what we, what we budgeted for. That 6.5 million year-over-year. And we just add the, the revenue from the, from the pharmacy. So our account, so what's left over at the bottom, our county subsidy, we've tried to manage, tried to stay at that 11, 10 to 11 million mark, which is usually pretty close to 50%. And we, we, we have been doing that over the last four years. We know that if we manage our expenses well and hit our revenue targets, that will reduce the, the subsidy for the county, so. The next slide here is the revenue by payer. So what we've, what we experienced at CMHC is pretty consistent from payer to payer. We did have a shift in the Region 6 position to all other payers because of Medicaid expansion that happened in 2020, 2021. But our Region 6, I'll just, I'll start at the top. The pharmacy, as I mentioned before, is about a third, or 31% of our total revenue at CMHC. Next in line, of course, is Medicaid, at about the same percentage, 31% of our revenues drawn from Medicaid services. And that has gone up from Medicaid expansion. But what we've noticed in the last year, Medicaid had not been coming in at budget, but maybe a little bit below. Some of the paying sources have picked up that slack a little bit, private insurance. Region 6 has been coming back a little bit on a number of cases where folks may have lost Medicaid coverage or failed to apply. And Region 6 has been that safeguard for us that have agreed to come back and, and pay us for that revenue. So it's been a consistent, probably over the last three years, 15% of our total revenue, Region 6. And then followed closely by Medicare at 11, and then everything else, private insurance. It's been consistently about 7% to 8%. And then various other forms of revenue. We've, we have the disproportionate share, the DISH dollars coming in. We have other miscellaneous, our in-house programs, some with the, with the Correctional Center, our shared, excuse me, Start Now program. Revenue has been coming in from that contract. And, and then self-pay. And you see the totals there along the bottom. Our revenue has consistently increased year-over-year, not by huge amounts, but consistent with our increase in expenses and, you know, any, any new programs that we've had derived or come on. Also, we've made a lot of efforts in reining in some of our, maybe some of our billing inefficiencies. We've, we've worked really closely with Deb Whitaker, DCHC, contacted a lot of the payers' insurances to shore up payments. And so that's kind of part of our improvement there. And, and then, of course, pharmacy, increase in pharmacy, so. So a pretty, a pretty consistent story there. And then the next slide here is then a revenue by our service areas. So for the most part, CMHC is, has our acute inpatient services, our hospital, and our outpatient services that approximately make up about 80% of our total revenue from services. Detox is probably about 8 to 10%. So those two big, big portions, the revenue component for those two, for inpatient services, the pharmacy makes up about 6%. 6% of the pharmacy, the 3 million, is from basically long-term injectables that are given to our inpatient services, our clients. And then 94% to our outpatient clients. And, and then from there, our detox is, like I said, about 10% of our total revenue. And then day treatment, intensive outpatient, emergency community support, which is strictly a Region 6-funded program. Our grants or the DISH, any adjustments in Medicare or other miscellaneous, small amounts there. But for the most part, we, we really rely on, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, our arrangement there with, and our inpatient and outpatient services, making those, making sure that those are billed and collected, that revenue, according to our contracts there. But pretty consistent year-over-year, at 42% for the inpatient and a little under 40% for outpatient is the average. And I think this is our final slide for the breakouts here. This is just a, a show of the rates that we've experienced for our, our payers on the basis of our services. So Region 6 rates are listed there. Medicaid, for the room and board, the Medicaid is a, is paid on a tiered basis, as you can see down below. Our Region 6 rate is, is a little bit better than Medicaid, but it represents only 15% of our total there. And Medicare also has a different rate, a little under 900. It's probably in line or a little bit below the Medicaid rate. And then our private insurance, which varies from insured to sure, we bill out at our gross level. And that, I just listed the rates there for inpatient, the per diem and detox. The private insurance probably negotiates somewhat more in line with the, about where the Medicare is, about 900 or 800 to 900 dollars on the, on the room and board per, for private insurance. And the same for detox there. But detox is primarily Region 6 and Medicaid, excuse me, funded, with private insurance about 7% of that total. And there, you can see the various other rates from, from all the other services as they compare to each other. Very tough to keep, keep that, keep that straight year-to-year. But like I said, Deb Whitaker does a good job down in billing. We work closely with the, with the billers there. And, and of course, the contracts that, that you all sign graciously for us. And we, we try to collect everything that we can possibly collect from our, from our agreements. I'm trying just to see if there's anything that, that pops out there. But, so that kind of gives you idea. I think Chair Garcia also asked if we had opportunities of whether some of the rates were more beneficial, if we moved or had the ability to move census from one to another to attract maybe a higher rate to increase revenue. I, I find it's not so easy with, with CMHC. We pretty much serve who comes in. It's, it's tough to plan that too as well. But, but of course, and it also depends on how much of a payer is to your total to move that. But we, we do, as, as part of our objectives, we do try to maximize our revenue in every opportunity we can and collect what we're supposed to collect. I just kind of wrote down just some tendencies that I've noticed. Region 6 is a pretty steady payer to work with. The revenue comes in 30 to 35 days after. So that's a consistent payer. Like I said, they only represent about 15%, which over the years, probably back in 2022, before Medicaid expansion, they represented about 55% of the revenue. So a big, big change there. So you're working with, with different folks. It's a little bit harder to collect the money from, let's say, Medicare, private insurance and such. But that's what we do. We just kind of move with, with what we're given. I did, I did mention that Medicaid is our largest payer at CMHC. It's responsible for about 30 to 35% of total revenues. Medicare is about 11%, just slowly behind Region 6. And the total between the two represent about 50% of our total revenue. So significant to stay on top of Medicaid and Medicare movements, which is not always so easy. But I've noticed that even in our budgeting process, we, we budget or forced to budget with Region 6. And, and the timeline that we have with the county, usually we're without the current surveys or, or rules and laws. So we just kind of do our best to kind of guess what the Medicaid or Medicare or even the region changes. And I've unfortunately found out that the region did not increase their rates. So that has a, an impact on revenue, of course. If I budgeted in a two, even a 2% increase to come from Region 6, and they're telling me right now that they're not going to pay it, that puts me in the hole, I got to make up that revenue somewhere else. So same's with Medicare too, Medicaid. They, and I think that reason for the region kind of holding is because of everything that's going on in the country with, they're just probably not sure what those reimbursements are going to be. So they're not going to come way up with rate increases or way down. But we know the cost of expenses is, is always going up. So it's a, it's a, it's a hard line to follow. And I, I do agree with, with Didi. It's been very difficult to manage that, you know, that, that investment at the bottom line to favor the county as we look at our, as we look at our expenses, managing that, and even in the budget with the, with the economy that is in, you know, increasing expenses. So just some other general, general tendencies there, if you can read that. These last two slides are, of course, in our budget presentation that we've filed with Lori Pierce. And these are potential ways to increase revenue that we've instilled within CMHC. Of course, the billing and collections manage that on a daily basis. So we, we watch consistently report our revenue status. So I've been working with the managers to not only pull down our revenue when we, when we get that each month, but also give them usable reports to compare to their budget for revenue and where they actually came in. The, we want to lower our accounts receivable and increase our collections. So that's something that we, we want to improve our, our side, our line of sight into those areas. Because, you know, as people get busy and you're trying to run the day-to-day, a lot of times balances in individual patients' accounts and working with, you know, the billing departments, they might get pushed off. And it's important to bring those back and to, to, to show that those are a very important part of the bottom line. So, so of course, always increase the number or the census of the clients that we serve. And that comes from exposure, marketing efforts, making sure people know who we are and that we're, we have these services available in the county. Always helps with our census. And then, of course, there, these are just six general areas on how to decrease expenses. I, I think I've talked about a lot of them already, so I won't go into there specifically. But, you know, overall, we're given a target to work with. But we also know within Douglas County and all the, all the departments, we're, we're really struggling to hold everything at bay and make sure that we're hitting our targets. And as you can see from our headcount, we're kind of maintaining that as well as keeping our revenue stream coming in according to plan. So that concludes my presentation here. I'm sure there's some questions.
Thank you, Randy. We'll go into discussion, Community Mental Health Center budget presentation overview, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this, Randy. You probably heard a discussion before with the Health Center. You know, for the people watching, just trying to make this as simple as possible so that they can get a grasp of the good work that we're doing in Douglas County and the good work that Community Mental Health Centers does. To give a perspective, the total all-in cost of the Douglas County Health Center is reflected in the budget proposal for this year. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is on page two?
Page two and three. Page two and three.
Is that?
Twenty-three million.
Expenses, 23 million?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then the non-Douglas County portion of this, you followed that discussion, the revenues coming into the Community Mental Health Center. I see a number on page five. Is that right? That shows a non-Douglas County Health Center contribution of 9.8 million?
So yes, that's correct. As you explained that, that's the average for the last four years, but for this particular year, that revenue total or non-Douglas County would be 10.6 million.
10.7?
Yeah, 10.7.
Okay. And is that reflected in here? Is that the number? I'm missing it someplace.
Right, so on page four, that revenue summary, probably, you know, towards the end there, the actual fiscal year '25, it's where I estimated where we would come in on revenues. It's that 10.6 million.
Okay. Very good. Now, to kind of give a better perspective, on page eight, you indicated that three big revenue sources are Medicaid at about 30 to 35%. On top of that, it appears that Medicare might be another 10 or 15% and that Region Six is about 15%. So figuring that on the low side, that's Medicaid, Medicare, Region Six, and there's also a 7.9% private insurance portion in there. On the low side of those numbers would be 67% from non-Douglas County sources. On the high side, it'd be 74% non-Douglas County sources. I'm just using those numbers.
Gotcha, yeah.
And those vary slightly over the years, but we're looking at an operation that is somewhere between 67 and 74% funded by non-Douglas County tax dollars. That's a very important thing for people to understand. When we're talking about these health services that both the Health Center and Behavioral Health provide are overwhelmingly subsidized by non-Douglas County tax dollars. Those are federal dollars, those are private insurance dollars, some of them aren't tax dollars, they're private insurance dollars. But that, you know, that's a real bargain to the Douglas County taxpayers for a vital service that you provide for people with mental health issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Trustee Borgson.
Thank you, and thank you, Randy. Just for clarification, when the payer rate for Region Six, they don't control that. DBH does through the legislature, so the legislature, the last two incidences haven't increased rates. So when they don't increase rates, DBH doesn't pass that down to the regions, the regions can't pass that down to providers. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified, that it wasn't Region Six deciding what those rates were going to be. But the one thing, and I'm hoping I say this clearly, on the Medicaid, so if, when we look at the rates and we look at the Region Six rate compared to the Medicaid rate, and it's a tiered, I get that, but you can see there's a difference just on the numbers that we see on this spreadsheet. So what I'm trying to get is prior to Medicaid expansion, our revenue and rates from Region Six was what? And then obviously, it dropped when Medicaid expansion occurred because the rates lower. And so can we figure out that number at all? And you don't have to answer, just because we're running out of time here. Just let's talk about that, let's try to figure that out. And then secondly, we also saw at the beginning, when Medicaid expansion occurred, that there were things, because they then, you know, we lost that revenue from the region's reimbursement. It went to Medicaid, but Medicaid was not paying for stuff that they normally had paid for prior to, and we were going to track that. So what, if possible, is that number that we saw fall off because Medicaid is now denying what was previously been approved for payment? Again, don't have to answer that right now, but let's talk about that because that really does affect our whole entire budget and obviously, you know, Region Six dollars, but then county subsidy dollars.
Sure.
Because if we don't have that revenue from, again, the two main payer sources after Region Six, then yeah, we're going to be short. And as we know, we're seeing more and more people without those abilities to pay, so that's going to increase our costs. So anyway, because we're time limited here, just we'll meet and talk about that, but I think it needs to be, we need to find that to tell our whole story.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Community Mental Health Center presentation? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As mentioned, the routine reports are mainly as presented this time around, so we could have had that time to focus on the budget this time around, but if Sheri or Erin, do you have any big highlight? Good, okay. Board members that were emailed to you ahead of time, any questions or comments on those? Good. Okay, in that case, I'll take a motion for adjournment of trustees. Motion by Morgan, second by Kavanaugh. This is for Board of Trustees of the Health Center. I'll do the roll call.
Commissioner, or Trustee Borgson.
Adjournment.
Yes.
Trustee Kavanaugh, Trustee Fahy, Trustee Friend, Trustee Morgan, Trustee Rogers, Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. The Board of Trustees is adjourned at 9:39 a.m.
Thank you. We're going to hop into our Board of Equalization. First, I'll do the usual routine for Board Commissioners' standard agenda. Yes. For Tuesday, June 24, 2025, again, please note that the Copy Open Meetings Act is on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. And since we didn't do it earlier, we'll do our official pledge of allegiance. All right, again, we're going to go into Board of Equalization first. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 10, 2025, B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 8, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of admitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote. Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, which are items C through F on the agenda. Motion could include all of them plus adjournment? Motion by Rogers to approve all resolutions plus adjournment, second by Morgan. Any discussion? Anybody here to speak on the resolutions for equalization? If not, we'll vote. Thank you. That concludes equalization. We'll now go into Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item in business is item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, May 13, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote. Thank you. We'll call up Ms. Redmond.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amber Redmond, Deputy Director of the Department of Corrections. Director Myers is out of office this week, so you'll be receiving the monthly board report from me. After the 11th month of the fiscal year, we are under budget just slightly by $67,000. Much of that amount is already dedicated to some ongoing projects, but we should be looking great for the end of the budget year. We did see a decrease in the amount of money that we've spent on overtime from the previous month. It's down $56,000, coming in at just over $311,000 for the month of May. Five officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in May, including one retirement, and we did promote one officer from CO1 to CO2. We do want to extend our congratulations to Nicholas Hues Camp, who was promoted to sergeant. Also, congratulations to Officer Matthew Cherviny on his well-deserved retirement. Additionally, Marcella Bogard, who retired from our records division. At the end of May, we were still 102% staffed among the correctional officer ranks. That does include the recent graduating class that had 24 officers in it, so they were still completing their field training during the month of May. They've since completed their field training during the month of June and are now working on their own throughout the facility. Moving on to enclosure two for community corrections, the Sanction Center and Traditional Discharge Center placed a total of 12 individuals in community corrections, saving a combined 60 bed days throughout the facility. Both the numbers for work release and house arrests are slightly higher than last month. We admitted 25 individuals to work release and admitted another 42 individuals to house We continue to see great things happening within the reentry services and therapeutic communities. We had 88 individuals admitted to the therapeutic community housing units. That number is slightly up from last month. There are currently 128 individuals on the GED waitlist with 71 active students, so that waitlist has grown even larger since last month. And two individuals achieved their GED. We will be celebrating that achievement for them in a graduation ceremony to be determined later this year. Moving on to pretrial services, we had a couple of record highs within this department. 306 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,345 individuals were supervised on the pretrial release program. We had 611 individuals participating in the 24/7 sobriety program during the month of May. That's the first time that program has exceeded over 600 individuals. And 207 individuals were supervised via GPS monitoring, which is a record high for that as well. 4,587 jail bed days were saved, again, a record high for the GPS monitoring. Moving on to enclosure number three for compliance, worth noting in that section, we recently received word on our next NCCHC audit, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. They indicated they have a backlog of audits that need to be performed, so they have given us notice that it will not take place this year. They're running behind and will now be scheduled until 2026, but they do extend our current accreditation until that next audit happens. Moving on to enclosure four regarding the population, we had 1,410 individuals admitted, 1,363 were released, bringing our high count in for the month of May, just over 1,100 at 1,109 individuals. Looking at the average daily population number, again, trending closer to 1,100 at 1,071. It was an increase over last month. Also worth noting is that the U.S. Marshall population remains stable. Moving on to enclosure five, medical and mental health report, there's a couple of items to note under this section. Looking at our infirmary numbers, that area of the jail remains busy as usual, 116 individuals placed on suicide precautions during the month of May and 208 individuals placed on drug and alcohol detox protocols. On the last bullet point item, we did have one individual who was administered Narcan or OPV. We began a pilot program on May 1 utilizing OPV. I'm going to expand upon that here at the end of the report on other noteworthy items, but this was the first time that OPV was administered within the facility. The individual who received that dose did respond well and remained at the facility in the infirmary under medical observation. Moving on to enclosure six for security operations and the honor guard, it's business as usual for our CNT and CERT teams. They were both deployed during the month of May for several reasons noted in the report. Several, there were nine searches conducted throughout the facility during the month of May. One notable item, we had a bottle of ear drops that were found and also appeared to be tampered with. We did send that liquid off for testing. I believe the initial test on that came back and indicated it was not drugs. Nonetheless, it is considered contraband because it was tampered with. The honor guard was deployed four occasions during Correctional Officers Week. We conducted Correctional Officers Week during the month of May, so their services were utilized for several different ceremonial items during that week. And we also participated in the metro area peace officers memorial ceremony. I participated in that, reading off the names of our fallen officers from the previous year. Moving on to enclosure number seven for staff development, wellness and retention, our number of applications coming in remained strong. We received 103 application for the correctional officer positions during the month of May and 13 interviews were conducted. Again, we graduated 24 new cadets on May 23. Also worth noting is we are preparing to transition to a new use of force protocol known as TAP. It's called the Tactical Athlete Program. The TAP approach is more holistic, emphasizing de-escalation techniques and rather than techniques based on pain compliance. It also has a pretty strong officer health and wellness component to that program. During May, interviews for TAP instructors were selected and they are out receiving their initial training this week. I think we have 10 individuals that are participating in that training. And then we will start deploying that throughout the facility. Classes begin in July for that. Also worth noting is we indicated on here that a wellness walk was scheduled for the month of June that has actually been rescheduled to a later month. We did not conduct that this month. And then a few items worth discussing under other noteworthy items. So again, more about that OPV trial or pilot program. On May 1, Douglas County and Wexford Health hosted a presentation on OPV, which is an opioid overdose antidote similar to Narcan, but with a much longer half-life. It's yet another tool in the fight against opioid overdoses and an ever-increasing potency of these illicit drugs. A single dose of OPV is more likely to get an individual through an opioid overdose than Narcan, which we've seen take multiple doses on several occasions throughout our facility. We hosted that meeting at our facility and in addition to our staff participating in that, the Omaha Police Department was present, Douglas County Health Department, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the Omaha Fire Department and the Nebraska State Probation Office were present to learn about OPV. Several of us attended the American Jail Association Conference in Fort Worth during the month of May, and we witnessed Director Mike Myers get sworn in as a member of the American Jail Association Board of Directors. He was elected to the Board of Directors during an election held earlier this year, and he's beginning a three-year term. A couple of us presented at that conference. Educational and vocational coordinator Heather Robinson presented at the conference on providing mandated special education services in the jail settings. And Director Myers and myself also did a presentation on successful recruitment and retention strategies. And then, as mentioned, we participated in Correctional Officers Week during the month of May. It was a tremendous success. There were many touching moments. of May. It was a tremendous success. There were pretty, there were many touching moments and some fun stuff happening during that week. The highlights included our first-ever lasting legacy awards ceremony, where we honored those who came before us and left DCDC a better place. We also had a mini carnival with various games and prizes, as well as our best-attended employee awards ceremony in years. The FOP Lodge A and the African-American Correctional Officers Association, the Honor Guard, DCDC Administration, and Wexford Health all sponsored food days during Corrections Week to show our appreciation for staff. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. We'll go to discussion on the corrections report, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Deputy Director Redmond, thank you for this.
Yes.
Just a couple of quick questions. The report indicates that there were 207 inmates in pretrial diversion with GPS monitors. Those are ankle bracelets?
Correct.
And people are equipped with those, and then they're allowed to go home?
Correct. They're supervising the community.
Okay. And I think if I'm reading this right, it says 207 individuals were supervised via GPS, a record high. 4,587 bed days were saved, another record high. And that savings, if you figure it at a per diem, it looks like of $170, was $779,790 to the taxpayers of Douglas County.
Theoretically, correct.
Okay. And that's a great number. I mean, in terms of all the other things that diversion does to assist people in the system and do good for our community, it saves us money.
Absolutely.
And that's just one program array that we're bringing online. And I just want folks to know that this has real impact on the overall budget. I noticed also that staffing is at 102% overall, and that's way up from where we were a year or two ago when we had staffing problems, which resulted in increased overtime, people working longer to fill in. And not having to do that and having adequate staff saves money as well.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, these are things that are good administratively, but they're also fiscally responsible things. It's important for folks to know that. The average daily population seems to be hovering at a little over 1,000, 1,071, up eight over last month, but it's been about 1,000 plus or minus now for a few months. And that's relatively low historically.
Historically.
I mean, we're down there. And that's, again, we're doing some creative and productive things with diversion to keep that population as low as possible. The average length of stay is 23 days. 49% of the inmates stay more than 72 hours, but 51% of the majority stay less than 72 hours.
That's correct.
Big turnover. 65% majority-minority, again, probably the most troubling statistic. It doesn't seem to change much, but in a community that's more than 65% white, having a 65% majority-minority is, again, something I point out that corrections doesn't have anything to do with, but you're kind of the canary in the coalmine in these reports, and I appreciate that. Maybe someday we could actually move that needle. That would be great. I appreciate your being here today and giving us this great report. It's a tough time of year. Usually the summer months, we experience a little uptick, and we'll probably go into that a little more maybe next month. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, and thank you, Amber. I just had one thing about the pretrial as well, and because there seems to be a lot of misinformation out there about our pretrial program, I ask that at our next meeting that there be a presentation of the overhaul we did
Sure.
with the pretrial and the success and how it operates, because again, there seems to still be those who want to say it's failing and it's not, but I think we need to get that word out there more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the corrections report? If none, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Motion by Morgan, second by, is it Rogers? Rogers. All right. We'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
That concludes Board of Corrections. We'll now go into Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Section 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Do I have a motion to second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda for items A through W. Do I have a motion to second for discussion? First, I'll go Commissioner Rogers to comment.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item T.
Item T. All right. We'll take item T separately. Any other requests for removals? Quick question?
Well, A is that, I'm trying to see, is the same amount of money as T, is there a correlation here between A and T? Because if so, A needs to be pulled as well.
All right. Anybody know if A and T are the same item or different items?
Well, let's just pull them for right now, and we can talk about them.
Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Do them together.
Okay. Any other requests for removals? Commissioner Kavanaugh, did you have one? Or is it for a discussion later? Okay, perfect. In that case, we are, we have a motion to approve consent agenda minus A and T for the moment. Do I have a second for that? A motion was initially from Rogers, second by Morgan. So, well, with a motion and a second on the table, we'll jump into discussion. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes. This is information for folks watching on YouTube or on TV. Item H is the library services interlocal agreement. And I just point this out because it's one of the things that we participate in, one of the services that we provide to our community, and it actually is supported by its own fairly small mill levy that we coordinate with the other libraries in Douglas County. I'm kind of a library guy. My family and I go to the library a lot. We're proud of our library system. We got a new library coming online that's going to be something to see on 72nd Dodge. And I was just wondering, Diane Carlson, Diane, if you could give us a little bit of an overview. These are interlocal agreements between Douglas County, City of Omaha, City of Valley, City of Beddington, Village of Waterloo, City of Rolson. Could you give us an idea of how this cooperative library service is provided here in Douglas County?
Sure. Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. These agreements are a continuation of a longstanding arrangement with the five municipalities in Douglas County to provide library services to citizens who live in the unincorporated areas of the county. Currently, there's, the five municipalities operate the libraries, but without these agreements, they, they wouldn't provide to the unincorporated citizens. So that's what these interlocals provide for. And as you stated, it's funded by the library levy. And like I said, these are, these are longstanding agreements. The current one expires the end of the month, and so we're entering into another seven-year agreement with all five entities.
That's great. I think everybody recognizes that any great community needs a great library system, going back to the Library of Alexandria thousands of years ago. And this is a good thing for us and for all of us. It also helps our kids become literate, and as literate members of our community, they're better equipped to meet their civic duties. So this is a good thing. I just wanted to let folks know that it's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda minus A and T? If not, we can vote on those first.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay. First, we'll get some context. T is the item that was laid over from two weeks ago, because it says so. A is for the exact same amount of money, 130,662. Is this a separate grant, a different grant? I see that Chief Rinn is on there. Maybe somebody in the chamber also is coming up. So we'll get some clarification quick.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Nate Kovarik, Douglas County Sheriff's, 1819 Farnham Street. Item A is for the salary for a deputy to be assigned to the problem-solving courts. And if you need more information on that, I'd be happy to provide that.
Got it. That's helpful. And just as a 20-second, can you remind the public which ones are the problem-solving courts?
Problem-solving courts include Drug Court, Young Adult Court, and Veterans Court. They're, it's kind of a team-based solution for unique situations. They involve nonviolent felonies. Obviously, Veterans Court is for veterans. Young Adult Courts is for, I believe the cutoff age is 25, but I might be wrong on that. And then Drug Courts, obviously, for people who have user-level problems in substance abuse.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so we'll focus on A first. Any comments or questions on A? Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, and thank you for that. I don't have the backup in my book. A is missing, so Commissioner Rogers showed me what the, what it was online. But how many deputies are assigned to those courts now?
We have one currently funded deputy, and then we have one part-time deputy.
To all the courts or just the veterans? Because this one is specific to the veterans, correct?
Correct. I believe our fully funded one is funded through the Drug Court, but they work all together. They, they attend all three.
And this is something that historically the Douglas County Sheriff's Office never did until of recent, which I understand the request had always gone to Omaha Police, and they refused to fund officers to be a part of these specialty courts, but it's part of the grant request or the grant criteria to have law enforcement involved. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a best practice of the problem-solving courts to have the law enforcement involved on the team.
And so we have one and a half right now that split their time, if you will, between those three courts.
That's correct.
And now we're adding another one.
Yes.
And are all of these, the one and a half current and this new one, grant-funded? Or have we now picked up, because again, we never did this. We started it by grants. So we got the one and a half deputies by grant dollars. Those grant dollars are still paying, or I assume they run out at a certain time, so then the county has to pick that cost up, right?
I believe this is a ongoing, well, as far as the Drug, the Drug Court deputy, that's been previous, that was currently funded this past year, is my understanding. The other, the half deputy, he also has other responsibilities besides Drug Court. I believe he's fully funded by the Sheriff's Office.
Is or is it?
I believe he is, but Chief Rinn might be able to correct that if that's incorrect.
Want Chief Rinn to clarify or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's on the Zoom. Go ahead, Chief Rinn, on the 1.5.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. The deputy that is the full-time Drug Court is a fundist of the district courts. They're the ones who hold the grant. She, Deputy Chase, has been funded there. I think this is her third year that they've been able to fund her entry-level salary. At some point, and that will, yeah, Cheryl Larson will be able to tell you, at some point, yes, those funds will run out, but as of right now, they are still going. We have not assumed that one. It's a partial payment. So we do pick up some of Deputy Chase's salary, and then Drug Court picks up the rest. I think it's about a 60/40 split. As far as the part-time deputy that goes up there, that is not a grant position. That's just one of those things, I think, Captain Clark hit, that as his other duties are not keeping him there, he's regularly on the payroll, and we bring that deputy there when, to fill in when he can.
So, okay, so now we're wanting another one, specific to the only veterans? Okay, a lot of time.
You want a second? Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. So now we're, we're bringing on another deputy, but is that, again, going to be just specific to the Veterans Court and no other court? Or are they going to, if the one is assigned to Drug Court full-time and the half person is divided between the three, but not really used for that, does other things, the Veterans Court one will be specific to the Veterans Court?
This grant is for both Veterans Court and Young Adult Court treatment, treatment courts. So the, the new position will cover those two courts.
And this is a one-year grant?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I, I am real supportive of these specialty courts, but again, you know, with our reigning in spending, sometimes we have to pick and choose what we do. And I'm concerned that we keep adding two through grants, but they're obviously not going to go away. And so then the county has to pick that up. And we're picking up things that we never did before at the cost of the county taxpayers. So that's what I'm concerned about. But again, while I support the specialty courts, and I think they do a very good service for individuals, I'm just concerned that it's going to continue to increase our costs when we don't have the dollars to increase.
Understood. It is a best practice to have law enforcement on the team, and the research does show that, that having law enforcement attend these hearings decreases the recidivism rate.
You know, I, I agree with all of that. And again, I would say 99% of the individuals are within the Omaha jurisdiction. That's why they were originally asked to participate in the Drug Courts and, or all these courts. And all these courts never had a law enforcement up until recently. And I agree with you. I, I understand how they work and why they work. But again, I have to question whether we, as the county, who've never been involved in this stuff, getting involved at the taxpayer dollars is the prudent thing to do when we have all these other requests from the office of need where our resources should be used. That's all.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Front.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, and Chief Rinn, feel, feel free to weigh in. These, a question like this, I think, is pertinent, and you may have already answered it. If it slipped through, forgive me. The judges, the district courts asking for these?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's not like theoretically, the Sheriff's Department or OPD is sitting around going, hmm, I wonder how we can hmm, I wonder how we can infiltrate a bunch of these different court systems. The judges came out, said they have a variety of concerns. They asked for this. This grant money would kick us off, and then we'd have to try to find stability later on. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Very briefly on my end, I mean, big picture, we want to be supportive of the specialty courts. You know, they're serving a great need in regards to young adults, you know, Drug Court, Veterans Court. So as mentioned, also, the judges' request that there be a law enforcement presence there for a variety of reasons, including the best practices mentioned. So definitely want to be supportive, big picture of everything, while also being cautious of future years and what's to come. But just to get a grasp for an idea from you, like, if we had unlimited money in the whole world to do whatever we wanted, how many deputies do you actually need for the current specialty courts? Like, would it be four, five? Like, what is the cap of, like, we're good, this is enough?
In my mind, it'd be nice to have one for each individualized court. Drug Court, so that'd be three, right? Drug Court, Veterans Court, and Young Adult Court. I mean, that would be my perfect world, I guess.
Yeah. Gotcha. Makes sense. Okay, very good. But yeah, I'm going to go ahead and support this, because I support the specialty courts and individuals being able to have those opportunities to go through those. But again, I also agree with being cautious for future years, so we'll keep an eye on that as we go. Commissioner Borgson?
Another question, and I see judges here, so if he wanted to say anything. But the 0.5, the half person who's fully paid by the county, to me, it would make more sense if you scooched that individual over to the courts if they're in need of something, because you just said that they kind of fill in. But if we have somebody that's there and just needs to do more, then put that person at 0.5 over there for now to help the one person who's doing the other two or three, other two courts. So anyway, just an idea, but if the judge wants to say something, I'd welcome that.
Judge?
Good morning. Jeff Lux, 503 Hall of Justice. I'm the current presiding judge of the District Court for six more days, and I'm a current Veterans Treatment Court, so I'm one of the judges that's in one of these problem-solving courts. I guess, thank you for giving me this time here, just real briefly. As has been said, the kind of the gold standard is for your problem-solving court team is to always have a law enforcement individual there. Coming from just how it actually kind of works out, if I've, you know, we started Veterans Treatment Court in 2016, been trying to get law enforcement buy-in ever since. We started getting it about three years ago. You know, we get audited by the state and the national, you know, Association of Drug Court Professionals. We get dinged when we don't have a law enforcement person on our team. It helps, I'm sure you've heard the ways that it helps out in terms of, you know, when we take somebody in the Veterans Treatment Court, or problem-solving courts in general, it's the judge and that defendant who's now going to become a participant. We're walking out on that limb together. And if it makes that decision a little easier, when you know you've got law enforcement on the team, if that person runs, that we can respond a little quicker to get that person kind of back into the program. Because when you're making that decision, we're taking them out of the jail. Most of those folks are in jail, and as soon as we bring them into the program, we're putting them on a treatment plan, and we can't do that in the jail. We're taking them out of the jail, getting them into society, trying to get them to be a good taxpayer member of society. The kind of the flip side, then, is in addition to just making that judge's determination a little easier, is when you've got law enforcement on the team, it helps get other law enforcement to buy in to, hey, I just arrested this person, I want to throw the book at him. Well, hey, they happen to be a veteran. Oh, hey, they happen to be eligible for Young Adult Court or Drug Court. You know, a lot of law enforcement over the years, they call us, you guys are the kumbaya courts. It's all hold hands and sing songs, and nobody's getting, being treated seriously. The opposite's the case. Folks that go through the program, it is a tough program, but everybody on the team, including the law enforcement, is wanting that person, working for that person to graduate. And so sometimes the person, the law enforcement member on the team, can talk to the law enforcement that made the arrest and get them on board. And if that law enfor, that arresting officer's on board, then that makes the county attorney more apt to be on board, which makes it better that maybe that person's going to get into one of these different problem-solving courts. So they're kind of anecdotal, but it does make a difference. And we've been working towards that gold standard of having somebody on, because really, when you have somebody on full-time, the real gold standard is to have them go to the scene and identify veterans at the time of arrest, so that you can start the process of getting them diverted into a problem-solving court that much earlier. But thank you. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer, if I can.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming down. Commissioner Kavanaugh, another question?
No, thanks, Judge, for this perspective. I think this ties into what we talked about a little earlier with our efforts in the correction system to divert people out. And these people, you know, certainly our veterans deserve all the help that we can get them after serving their country's interests. And I also think that, you know, the Drug Court, drug and alcohol problems are really a disease, and treating them, treating the disease really helps us get people out of the cycle of recidivism and coming back. And the bottom line of that is that $171 per diem that we just talked about at the correction center, which is entirely paid by the property taxpayers of Douglas County, goes down if we're able to help some of these people. The idea that there's tension in the court, you know, I've been in court before, Mr. Fahy's been in court before, tempers run high. Even if you leave the lawyers out of it, there's often conflicts in problem-solving courts. And so it makes sense to, you know, just have the ability to have people feel like they're in a safe space. This seems to be an appropriate use of our tax dollars on all of those different levels. So I appreciate this. I think it's worthy. We have security in all of our other courts, and it serves us well. And so I think the gold standard should be applied across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on item A?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Judge. Everyone else will vote on A only? Oh, motion from somebody, Kavanaugh, second by, second by friend. On just item A, yep, if you'd like to.
Samika Mees, Executive Director of North Omaha Community Partnership, 2406 Fowler Avenue, Suite 312. I did want to get clarification on this. Item A and item T seems to be a little confusing. And so for--
Stupid.
Okay.
So for item A, this is for the funding for the Sheriff's Office to add another employee to their special operations group.
Yeah, that one's item T, yep, from two weeks ago, yep.
Okay. And so item A is what I see on the agenda as listed for that. And then item T, when I look at the attachments, it shows the same information for item A. And so I'm just trying to get clarification on that. Are they asking for the funds to be moved over to, add the staff to the Veterans Court?
No, two separate grants, both from the Crime Commission. And if they have the same documents in the packet, then that's probably inaccuracy that occurred.
Can we confirm that?
No, for sure.
Okay.
That's the case. Item A is for the specialty courts, Drug Court, Veterans Court, youth court that we just talked about, Young Adult Court, rather. And then T is the grant that we spoke about two weeks ago that would fund that one individual, or one deputy--
For the SOG?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we're going to talk about next, yep.
Okay. Well, for item A, my stance would be the same, because these funds are coming from the Nebraska Crime Commission. And we all know that whoever follows, you know, the legislature, that those funds have been cut going forward. And so there is no guarantee, there was never an absolute guarantee, that they would be funded for the next year. But with, you know, the facts being that these funds were cut through legislature, we know that they will most likely not be receiving that grant going forward. And as County Commissioner Borgson mentioned, it then falls on the taxpayers' dollars. And this seems to be a common trend. And I will admit that, you know, across the board, when, you know, different initiatives receives funding through federal grants or state grants, that it funds for that period, and then it gets pushed off on the county or the city to continue to fund, we have to get away from that practice if we want to stay on top with our finances for our county, our city, and our state. We have to remove that practice across the board, so it's not just for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. But clearly, across the board, we need to change that practice. It's not a good one. And so for that reason, I would be an opponent to having this grant approved and the funds forwarded for this position. If we can't figure out where the funds are going to come from next year, then there's no point in starting it now. I understand everything that has been said and the importance, and I respect the judge's words as well. But the bottom line is, if we can't figure out how we're going to pay that salary going forward, and it's going to fall back on the taxpayers' dollars, then we don't even need to start it to begin with. And we need to follow correcting that trend across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on item A? Larry?
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. It's rather obvious to me today that there's substantial changes to the way your board Never in the past have I seen anybody allowed to come up here like this lady just did. Yes, she's part of the North Omaha Community Group. Well, I'm in a, have a community of not North Omaha, and I disagree with your allowing her to come up here and start meddling in the sheriff's affairs. It's quite obvious that that's what they're doing. She's not the only community member here from North Omaha. They're an activist group. They're getting their wishes said however they want to say it, however long they want to say it. But you often stop me, and I don't like that, Roger.
Everybody gets a chance to speak, Larry. And everybody gets four minutes. She got four minutes. You get four minutes.
She was allowed much more than I've ever been allowed without being interrupted.
If you followed the clock, it was actually less than four minutes.
So I'm just protesting that it's going to be a long hot summer with all the North Omaha Community Action Groups that are here, including Mr. Feldman. If you do not know this by now, it's going to be a long, hot summer. They're trying to meddle with police versus sheriff, and that's the kind of the basic issue they're at here. We got to stop that. It's none of their business, okay? They can go to your subcommittee meetings and hope to have an input, but not at the microphone.
Everybody can comment on the agenda, Larry.
Don't give them spatial deference at the microphone. Thank you.
Everybody gets to comment on the agenda. And we are on item A, and I'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
I'd just like to say two quick things. The lady that spoke, spoke about an agenda item totally. Didn't even use all of your time. And our chairperson watches that carefully. And, you know, Larry, I think we have as fair a chairman as we've ever had. All the chairpersons have been, in my opinion, excellent at trying to keep the times, and it's not the job that I desire, for sure. And I'm appreciative of what you do, Roger Marahan, Chris, and others that have been the chairperson. So it was on the agenda, and that's it. And thank you for your comments, both of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification, because I see this as the acceptance of funding. Funding has already been approved, if I interpret that language correctly, right?
By the Crime Commission, though, we have to formally accept it and sign off on it.
I understand. And just to make sure that we're talking apples and apples, maybe we're not. In item E that we did approve, it's approval of an agreement. This is a grant fund as well. Is that a different thing? Acceptance of funding or approval of agreement? Are those the same things?
Item E?
Item E is a community-based grant-funded for juvenile services of $65,280. And it says grant-funded, as this one is grant-funded. I'm just trying to clarify for my own purposes, acceptance of funding and approval of agreement. Is there a difference there, or is it the same thing?
Teresa, you want to give a stab at it?
Sure thing. Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. I would say they're different. And I'll defer to Ms. Havacotti if I misstate this particular contract under E. But I would say they're different. The one is the acceptance of the funding, and in this instance, they're talking about funding a county position. But then, in the instance, I think, under E, you're spending money, and so you'll need to comply with the County Purchasing Act and do the agreement, have the county attorney look at it. So I would say that they're different.
Okay. But in both cases, we're talking about non-Douglas County funds?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item A, anybody else? Commissioner Fahy?
I just want to say briefly that I very much appreciate all of the comments we've had here today, with the exception of Mr. Storres, to which I take extreme offense at its fairly obvious insinuation of who should and should not be allowed to comment on the affairs of law enforcement. Having said that, I am moved by Judge Lux's explanation for the need for this at this time. I would, however, say I agree with Commissioner Borgson that this is not a cost Douglas County can agree to bear indefinitely. And so there's going to have to be some further discussions on this once this grant is exhausted.
Thank you. Anybody else on item A? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioner Borgson voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We're going to go to item T, which is the last one, from consent agenda. Chief Rinn, or Captain, or anybody else, do you want to give just a super quick summary on what this is again?
Sure. Can you hear me? Captain Eric Sellers with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I just want to give you a quick briefing, since you didn't hear this last time, of why we want this, what it's going to do, and why the OVP. Douglas County might not appear to be a fertile ground for gang activity. However, this is not the case. Despite this, a number of criminal organizations have actually established a presence within our organization or our jurisdiction. These gangs are involved in a wide variety of unlawful activities, including the trafficking of drugs, the commission of violent crimes, the trafficking of people, and other illegal activities. Gang activity investigators or investigations, excuse me, are not new to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. The DCSO has historically encountered criminal gang activity correlating in cases of homicide, trafficking, check fraud, warrants, auto thefts, and assaults. Within the eastern part of Nebraska, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, Washington County Sheriff's Office, and the Sarbit County Sheriff's Office maintain investigators trained in criminal gang suppression and intelligence. The DCSO is a primary investigative agency for escaped inmates and parole absconders who are often tied to criminal gang organizations. Criminal challenges at least would allow us, the DCSO, to better prepare ourselves within the realm of intervention and prevention. Additionally, the DCSO commonly encounters gang activity within schools, as reported by our SROs. Under LB 63 in 2009, introduced by then-Senator Rinn, provided law enforcement these tools that more effectively investigate and prosecute crimes of violence and gang-related offenses. The OVP Board was created under LB 63. The purpose was funding, was, of the funding was to address street and gang violence, homicide, and injuries caused by firearms. That's what we're trying to do, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. We're asking for this money not to put a traditional gang officer inside the city or do what the city of Omaha is currently doing. This is to investigate crimes in the county, more specifically what we're seeing in the Irvington Corridor-- more specifically what we're seeing in the Irvington corridor. We commonly work with Omaha Police on, on gang activity that crosses out of Omaha into that area. Specifically, we had a stolen car that was dumped in the apartments in Irvington Heights. It's related to a gang activity homicide. And we track the vehicle on what you know as our LPRs. We do on a regular basis. What we're doing is, under the OVP, is we want to not only create information intelligence for our officers that are responding, but also address that with the courts. Often, we see district courts where there are cases, homicide cases, relating to homicides with competing gangs in the area. And we don't necessarily know that information until a day or two before, when Omaha may reach out to us. And we need to be able to better prepare ourselves to handle those courtrooms. We see gang activity in, in corrections. Just last night, we had a report in corrections of an assault that was gang-related. So, again, we're not asking for this position to go inside the city of Omaha. This is, there are going to be times if, if something happens in unincorporated Douglas County, the suspect lives in the city, that our paths may cross, but we will coordinate with Omaha Police when it comes to that. So I don't want you to think we're duplicating our services with that. We're never going to be Omaha gang. That's not what we're intending to do. This is to better just track the gang activity in unincorporated Douglas County.
Thank you for that summary. We'll go into discussion, starting with Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Captain, I want to, so since this was brought up the last meeting, there's the letter that dropped from OPD to the sheriff. Have you all met yet?
I'm sorry, have?
Since the item was on the agenda last time, there's the letter that's been publicized in regards from the city of Omaha to the sheriff. Have you all met yet?
I believe the chief and the sheriff have a time set up that they're going to meet here shortly.
Okay. So my understanding is that, I've seen you at the 360 meetings, so just for record, you know what they are?
Yes.
Okay. At those meetings, there's a report that happens from the Omaha gang unit, and I've been going to those meetings for 10 years or so, and I've never heard the sheriff's office give a gang report?
Correct. If I can explain, since we don't have a gang unit, we've never really kept the statistics. But what we're seeing anodally is, is rise in, in gang-related activity. And like I mentioned, both, in a lot of the, like, the corrections and down here at the courts, but we're seeing a lot in the Irvington area. And that's what we want to start tracking. And again, through OVP, if, if you accept this grant, we're going to track those numbers quarterly to provide to the OVP, to the Crime Commission. And really, we need to check our success. We want it to be successful, because if, if so, then we can continue that, hopefully continue that, the, the grant funding. And before we would even come to you to ask for that to be placed into our budget, being a member of the OVP Commission myself, I have a vested interest in seeing Douglas County be successful, work not only with community advocacy to improve the program. I see a lot of funding going out to different organizations throughout Omaha or Douglas County, or through the state, with little, little to no interplay between those organizations. I would like to change that and actually work with, with those agencies accepting funding within Omaha and Douglas County on how can we, how can we work better to, to reduce gang activity, and more specifically, to keep juveniles out of, out of gangs.
So, okay, so based on that, you know, that's the question to me and why I'm going to ask, and I'm going to ask, you know, for board support on this. You mentioned coordination between OPD and the sheriff's office.
Correct.
The dispute and question right now from the incident that's brought all this to pass is coordination. There's dispute of whether it was coordination or not. So what I'm going to ask is to postpone this or lay this over indefinitely until after you all meet. And that is because it warrants a conversation to understand what the boundaries are. Because if you're saying you're going to coordinate, there's a lot of questions about what the coordination is. And even if I consider this?
If I may, the chief and sheriff will meet and coordinate, but I do coordinate and speak with Command of Omaha on a regular, weekly basis every day about cases that we are encountering.
Okay, well, it's doubt about the current case right now, because there's dispute about whether coordination was there. And, and that's laid out in this letter. So, again, what I'm going to ask, and I would ask for support, is to postpone this until that meeting happens, and there's an understanding. Now, I'm not even promising I'm going to vote for it then, but it's justified that this be cleared up, because concern has been brought to a level that people may have suspected, but now they're clear. So, Mr. Chair, I move to lay this over until that meeting happens, and then consider it then.
All right, so there's a motion on table to table the topic without a defined date. So we technically could bring it back, but there's no date to actually bring it back on a specific day, just to explain the motion. That was by Rogers. There is a second for that by Fahy. We'll take comment on the motion being made to table. Commissioner Borgeson? Or do tables have discussion? Somebody remind me?
That's why I didn't say table.
Oh, you said?
That's why I said lay it over until after they meet.
Okay, lay it over until after they meet. Well, that one would have discussion, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you. So, and thank you, Captain Sellers. But you, but, so you said you don't track gang activity, and this grant would help do that?
Yeah, we would start tracking that. And, you know, we know it's happening, we see it, but we don't necessarily track by numbers, if you will, in a spreadsheet of how many cases are correlated to gang activity. But we know it's happening.
But then, okay, so then how do we know? And again, you're speaking of Irvington, because that's outside the city of Omaha. How do you know that there's increased gang activity in Irvington if we don't track it?
Well, all of our members of patrol work it, and they can tell us, and my investigators work it, and can tell us when it's related to crimes or shootings. More specifically, shootings where you're driving by, shooting occupied dwellings, and we're seeing a lot of that's gang activity. Just something we didn't see 10 years ago.
I guess for me, and I will agree to hold this over until the meeting takes place, because, again, I think that there needs to be further discussion on it. And I do see, again, this as more of a duplication of services that Omaha is already doing, that we don't need additional deputies to be doing. We, again, hadn't forever, and now it seems like we're increasing in areas that we hadn't before. And to me, it is a duplication, especially within those boundaries. And so maybe after that conversation, it'd be more clarity on it?
Absolutely. If, if I may, if I may, we will run out of acceptance of the grants, I believe sometime in July.
July.
It's July to June of 2026. Again, we can talk about duplication, but years ago, I created the traffic unit to address traffic concerns in the county. Most of the stuff that was traffic is in the city. However, we do have that in the county. What I'm saying here is we do have gang activity in the county, and I just want to best address that. If we're given this grant, we, if we can't show the numbers in one year that make positive impact, I wouldn't be asking to keep that, that person. We wouldn't even seek the funding anymore, and that person's retribution would move back into another local position. I'm just wanting the opportunity to take a year to see if this does make an impact in the community.
Continue to talk, but I'm not sold.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
There's not really a date for how long we're laying it over. I, not that much in favor of laying it over, but if we could put in July 8th, we should give time for the sheriff and the police chief to have their meeting and then come back so that additional questions could be asked. I'd ask if the maker of the motion would be acceptable to the 8th?
If the chair, if it's done by unanimous consent, then it's good. I'm, I'm fine with that, knowing that if this doesn't happen at the 8th, I'm asking for the same thing again. Okay.
Yeah. Well, the motion being on the table makes it the board's motion. So does everybody, like mentioned, have unanimous consent that that's okay to change it to July 8th, the original motion? Or is anybody against that? Because otherwise, we'll have to continue with the original motion. Good? Okay. So it's been advised to be July 8th when we would revisit it, but we'll continue with the dialogue. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Captain, and let me start off by saying this, not necessarily coming from the direction of the board, but I, I think, I think it would be wise if we all keep, just in the, in the front of our mind, to the best of our ability, that for the most part, for the most part, any funds that are being distributed by the Office of Violence Prevention, for the most part, there are exceptions, are taxpayer dollars. There, there's different avenues that those taxpayer dollars come in. They come in through the state, they come in through the county, they come in through, through sales tax, they come, they come in a variety of ways. But make no mistake, we're talking about taxpayer dollars here, for the most part. So let's set that aside for one second. We all know that this is initially a state grant, and there would have to be sustainability. And I think Commissioner Borgeson brought up a good point. We always want to look to sustainability in the future. The big question seems to be sustainability of a particular unit that we, as seven commissioners, don't have any control over until the money is distrib, or, but until after the money is distributed. Here's what I mean by that. Captain, if you didn't have this appropriation, if you didn't get this amount of money, would the special operations unit go away? Would there be a command decision to make a decision based on the lack of this funding that a special operating unit within Douglas County Sheriff's Office would go away?
Absolutely not. The only reason this falls under special operations is organizationally, it made the most sense. But it can fall under criminal investigations, to take it off the proverbial hot, hot potato here. It has nothing to do with special operations. It's when we, when, if this were approved, that organizationally speaking, that would just be the best place to put that position.
So if it didn't go away, thank you. If it didn't go away, would the sheriff's, and, and you didn't get this money, would the sheriff's department investigatory or enforcement capability be practically reduced?
It, we, it would hinder us on, on the aspect of looking into gang activity related to violent crime. We would try to do that. It's just going to be a lot easier with the, the extra body to do so.
Okay. And Captain, and the, the argument is legitimate, based on the, we all know it was supposed to be a confidential document, but we all know what the Omaha Police Department's, the chief's letter said. The argument, again, somewhat legitimate one, and I'm not trying to slight it, is that there wasn't appropriate coordination. One of the arguments in the letter, and one of the arguments has been over and over again, to a certain degree in the last few weeks, that there wasn't appropriate coordination. And this is a little rhetorical. Define coordination. So the chief of police and the sheriff didn't know that that particular incident, unfortunate incident, occurred the other night? Define coordination for me, based on law enforcement principles. This happens in every jurisdiction, in every large city and county in the United States. Define coordination. So in other words, the sheriff and the chief of police didn't know, and they were surprised by it. Do you think that night, that there were people on command staff? There was a sergeant in one place and a commander in another place? Do you think that there was coordination there? Because I've heard there was. Might not have been very exciting, and they might not have been too happy about that particular type of coordination, depending on the law enforcement agency, but it occurred. There was coordination. And again, Sheriff Hanson and Chief Schmader didn't know. Okay. Well, how much stuff goes on here that I don't know about? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Fahy?
I'll withdraw.
Okay, thank you. I do want to make sure that Senator Spivey gets a moment. So let me go to Zoom real quick. Senator Ashley Spivey, are you on Zoom by chance? I saw your hand up, but maybe no longer. Oh, yep.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Okay, now we can, yep.
Thank you, Chair Rogers, and good morning, commissioners. I am Senator Ashley Spivey from District 13, and I appreciate a quick opportunity just to weigh in on this. I appreciate the feedback and motion on the table to lay this over until the chief and sheriff have a conversation. I think there's a couple of things going on outside of the specific incident and officer-involved killing, or sheriff-involved killing with Mr. Ibrahim, and what that entails. In general, I think this plays into a larger conversation of how do we address gun violence in our community? And what does that look like? I currently have a bill in the legislature, and I have been talking to the Crime Commission specifically around the aid formula, and what does it look like to really invest in evidence-based practices that address why younger people have access to guns? I believe that this grant is a misstep and does not align to the intention of the aid through the Crime Commission. And again, evidence-based practices on where investment should be had in order to see transformation at the community-based level. And so my office is currently reaching out to the Crime Commission to have another conversation about this. But I do have a bill currently in the legislature about that that will be taken up the second half of the biennium. I'm also in conversation with the chief specifically around Omaha and parts of Douglas County, of course, around what does this look like from a support perspective and community-based practices for addressing gun violence. And I do appreciate the, the inquiry from Commissioner Borgeson around the data. I think, in my humble opinion, and, and appreciate the dialogue that you all have provided, that if this gang activity is becoming more prevalent, what can the sheriff's department do within their current budget to be able to address this and bring that to you all as the appropriators and decision-makers for their budget? We are having the same conversations at the state level around budgets and choices and priorities. And I think that this is not a good use of taxpayer dollars through the grant process. There are other avenues in which there could be better collaboration and coordination, which has not been demonstrated yet by this specific law enforcement office. And so my hope is that, and what I would ask of you all to consider in your decision-making and your leadership is to have a deeper conversation, not just about this appropriation and approval of the funds through the Crime Commission to the sheriff's office, but what does this look like in the larger ecosystem? And how do we best position our communities to be successful and use evidence-based practices to address what is potentially happening and happening in our community? So again, I appreciate the time to be able to weigh in and appreciate your leadership and decision-making in this conversation.
Thank you, Senator Spivey. Appreciate you coming on Zoom today. I'll, going to go to Commissioner Borgeson in a second, and then I'll go to public commentary as well. Commissioner Borgeson?
Commissioner Friend wasn't done yet.
Oh, wasn't done? Okay. Sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. You could have, you could have gone. No, I just wanted to finish my thought, okay? And I, and I could be wrong. I, I am quite often. But I don't think this needs to be delayed, and I'll tell you why. Our, my analysis and my understanding of our statutory authority as seven commissioners, it's actually appropriate. Our job is to actually position these departments that we fundamentally fund to do the job that some of them, elected officials, were hired to do. So we appropriate, we handle the appropriation, and then the departments that are receiving that appropriation implement, and under this circumstance, implement in positioning public safety in Douglas County. That's the sheriff's job. Whether people in this room or whether people in our community like it or not, that is it. I understand the statutory authority. That's our job. Appropriate it. Let them handle the public service piece, public safety piece. And here's why. I'm not a public safety professional. It was also said that the special operating unit doesn't go away. It was also said that the special operations unit doesn't go away. If they don't get this grant, that's not going anywhere. It's going to be there. The sheriff's department has made the determination that this type of public safety initiative is going to continue. With that in mind, what's our debate here? The fact that we're mad at them and we don't like the fact that they're going to get $130,000? I don't think that's it. I don't think seven commissioners sit here and do that. I'm telling you, I don't see any reason to delay. I was director of the Office of Violence Prevention for over a year. I know where that money comes from. I know how it's distributed, and I know why. It's being distributed under this circumstance because the sheriff's department made a valid case that they needed it from the standpoint of public safety. We can weigh in, more than welcome, come on and talk about it. I'm telling you right now, the special operations unit is not going away. I've been told that four times now, one today on the record. So what's the argument? We don't want them to have the $130,000? I disagree. I don't think we ought to delay it. I think that this appropriation has been made, there was a valid argument for it. I think we're just wasting our time. I think we need to let these organizations, after the effective appropriation of the money, we need to let them work. And if they don't do a very good job, guess what? There's an election every four years, not just for sheriff, not just for clerk of the court, not just for whoever else, a ton of them, and also all seven of us commissioners. Make a decision based on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the point's been made that, you know, this is a money decision. Yeah, you can say that, but as the fact, as of that letter going out, it's no longer a money decision, it is a policy decision. It is a decision and a discussion about policing and enforcement policy, and one that is in the realm. No matter what is appropriated and going with that, there's a role. And it's brought to the surface pending matters that, you know, have kind of been said before this board, but I really didn't feel comfortable in questioning because I didn't have clear-cut knowledge that this letter has brought out. For instance, there's been times in regards to juvenile justice matters, where the offices come up here and said they're speaking with, you know, communication with OPD. That's in question. That's a policy issue. And there are realms, over the last 20 years, where I've been here, and I've never had this debate. The hottest summer in a while that happened here may have been about, hmm, 2007? No, no, 2010, or something to that degree. And the sheriff's office was not playing in that. There was a point where the State Patrol was talking about coming in here, and everybody was like, no, don't do that. There's a whole different policy discussion that needs to happen, and I want to hear that discussion, because there's been a creep silently for a while. There's been a creep in regards to the sheriff's office getting involved with runners over at radius that they've never touched before, and that has been OPDs. And so it's not a money discussion anymore, it is a policy discussion that kind of needs to be had, because the issue warrants that, because of the gravity of it. And like I said, I don't, I'm not saying I'm going to vote for it when it comes back, but the letter and the circumstances at hand demand that discussion before it moves forward, because like I said, I sit in a meeting every week when I don't have class. And there, and at one point, there was a chomping at the bit to report out on things that were happening in regards to, I mean, you would come in this meeting on 52nd Street, and things are being reported about things going on at 144th and Maple. And people would look around the room like, okay, but what does that got to do with what's going on right now? And so what I'm saying is, there's a policy discussion to be had, because there, the things that are, they're just not warranted. In the last three weeks since that incident, there hadn't been any activity in Douglas County? Because before, there was eager, eagerness to report what's going on. So what I'm saying is, the letter has warranted up not to a money decision, but a policy decision about how those offices operate, and they need to talk. So that's why I think this is warranted, and that's why I'm asking for this to go. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to some public commentary as well, from anybody in the chamber.
Larry Storer, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm not a lawyer, I do have a degree. I study a lot of history. I support the Constitution of the United States as devised by our founding fathers, under a concept of federalism which shares governance. There's a system of federal government, and the rest, which is not under their control, is under your control. The county boards are one of the most important things to the system of government that we have. This is not a democracy. All democracies have failed, that is why they did not form a democracy. You people never discussed that. You all use the word democracy. It's not true, not true at all. What happens in democracies, we have little groups that want to come in and meddle and take over the jobs of law enforcement. This has happened all through history, this is what happened with Hitler in Germany. The public got roused up, sent to interrupt the meetings and break up the meetings and break up the government, meddle with the law enforcement. The county sheriffs have more authority than you do, according to the founding fathers. You do not control them. They have more power than you do, and they work for us. You work for us. So your job is not to meddle with changing their power, it's to support them. And the police, because I don't care whether you're a police officer or a sheriff. If the law's being broken and my safety is at risk, I expect either one of you to act, or both simultaneously. We cannot separate the two. So don't let community activist groups try to do that. That's the way you split up a country. Stop it now, or it's going to be a long, hot summer. If you don't see the big picture, it's out there, folks. This is going to be 2020 all over again, but worse. Shake your head, but be ready for it. That's what it's about. They want to change your government.
Ms. Tamika?
Good morning, Board. Once again, my name is Tamika Meese. I'm the Executive Director of North Omaha Community Partnership at 2406 Fowler Avenue, Suite 312. I'm here today to strongly oppose the acceptance of the Nebraska Crime Commission grant awarded to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and its expansion of the Special Operations Group. Let me be clear. This task force is not welcomed by our community. It has brought fear, trauma, and tension, especially in the black and brown neighborhoods, where residents already face the brunt of systemic overpolicing and disinvestment. The community is not asking for more tactical teams. We are asking for safety, accountability, and investment in the solutions that actually prevent harm, not perpetuate it. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office has shown no commitment to building public trust. A young man, Janidi Ibrahim, was killed during an interaction with the DCSO over a month ago. It took an entire month, and only after sustained community pressure, for the family to be allowed to view the body camera footage just this past Friday, and it happened a month ago. Now let me show you the contrast. Just last week, a black man named Edward Henry died while in Omaha Police Department custody at the Douglas County Correctional Center. In response, OPD met with Mr. Henry's family within hours of his death. They showed the family the body cam footage the very next day, on Juneteenth, the federal holiday when everyone is off. Then they held a press conference with the police chief, the mayor, and the city council, District 2 representative, and publicly released the footage. Was it perfect? No. But it was a step towards transparency, a step towards acknowledging that the community deserves to be informed, not ignored. OPD is at least making strides to improve community relations. DCSO, on the other hand, only responds under pressure. They have not come to the table. They have not engaged with the community. And now we're being asked to approve additional funding to grow a unit that does not reflect the values of transparency, accountability, or equity. And let's not forget, the Nebraska Crime Commission itself is facing budget cuts. There is no guarantee that this funding is sustainable. What we build today, we must be willing to maintain, and more importantly, defend the community we serve. On behalf of North Omaha Community Partnership, and the many families, youth, and neighbors we advocate for, I urge this Board to reject the grant and to stand with the people who live with the consequences of your decisions every day. I would also like to point out, I did read somewhere that this acceptance has to be made by the 27th of this month. I don't know if that's still true, but if it is true, it further disappoints me that the meeting between our Douglas County Sheriff Hanson and our police chief, Schmader, has not met. It further shows a lack of the responsibility and the intentions on collaborating with our largest law enforcement in our area within the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get Commissioner Fahy, and then I'll go back to the public. Commissioner Fahy?
I will withdraw yet again.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to speak on this item T on consent agenda?
Good morning. I hope all is well with all of you, because it's not with me. My name is Kimberly W. Bethia, I reside at 5142 Bedford Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska 68104. I'm listening to what's going on here, and as a mother, a taxpayer, I have a business, I pay taxes, I have allocated a lot of money to this police fund, which I have stopped doing that. We need to address the real concern here. This gentleman, Mike Friend, he says the matter is public safety. The people put in place to make us safe, they're killing us. We don't feel safe. I know this, because they're not calling the police, they call me, okay? A lot of you don't know me, but the people out there in the community, they know me. When the power goes out, I take my vehicle, and I go to the stores, and I get water to take it to the low-income towers, to the elders, to the single parents. We need to address the issues that are, look here. At the end of the day, I have five sons, okay? These kids being murdered? This is not, the people that are, you said 400 years of community people coming in and breaking up the government. Let's talk about history. Every time a black organization springs up to try to speak in defense of our communities and our people, what happens to them? They're murdered and incarcerated. This has been going on for a very long time, okay? At the end of the day, I'm not here because, and I know I'm getting upset, because I'm very passionate about what I'm saying. I'm not going to tell you why I'm not here, I'm going to tell you why I am here. We don't care about them being in place. You're saying, well, that department's still going to be there, let them be there. But Wickersham proved that if you, Wickersham, the study in Kansas City, it proved if you saturate the streets with police officers, it will not change crime. What we need to change is the dynamic between officers and cops. The cops are killing us. We need more police, and, sir, I let you speak, let me speak, respect. We need more police officers that are willing to get, do the footwork. We, I've seen none of these faces. This is, and look, this is no disrespect to none of you, but I've seen, I've been in the parades, I have done security for some of your colleagues, okay? Normally, I'm quiet, I don't say anything, but this is not the time to be quiet. Silence is acceptance. We are no longer accepting this. We are not saying that we don't want the sheriff's department, the police department, to do their jobs, but what we're saying is, we want them to do their jobs correctly. That's how you make change. It's conflict struggle, conflict struggle growth, then change. I'm sorry, I'm stuttering, because I'm getting interrupted. I see you shaking your head, I still love you, baby. But at the end of the day, okay, I need us all to understand that this is bigger than putting money into the sheriff's office or the police department. We have a serious mental illness crisis going on in North Omaha. We have a serious education problem going on in North Omaha. I had a kid bring me home a report card of all these. No one contacted me, no one, and I'm very active in everything that I do. No one said, ma'am, look, we have an issue going on with your kid, let's sit down, talk about it, and work it out. But I can guarantee you that when he go, when he can't get into college, when he can't go and get him a legit job, where do you think he's going to go? He's going to be in the streets. This is not about where the bunny is going, okay? This is about policy, and the policies need to change. I have children, all sons, I have no daughters, okay? I'm here taking time out of my busy day, looking like this, I can throw a suit on with the best of you, one thing about it, okay? I graduated from college three times. My GPA is 3.97, I know what I'm talking about. At the end of the day, okay, we need more police that's going to get out there and say, ma'am, how you doing today? Perfect example, three weeks ago, my house was surrounded by your gang unit. Hmm? Yeah, let's talk about this. My son, he had a quote-unquote felony warrant for a juvenile status offense. He's nonviolent. He's nonviolent. They discharged him from juvenile probation and made him an adult felon for a status offense. Y'all know what I'm talking about. That means he didn't go to school.
Thank you, ma'am.
That means he missed curfew. But then it doesn't alter the fact that that was the excuse they used to surround my house like I'm a criminal. I don't have a criminal record. You can look me up. Kimberly Woollett-Bethia, February 26, 1985. I come from a long line of military, a whole long, you can look them up, too. At the end of the day, we need to get on the same page as humans. You guys are not just politicians, you are our leaders. Lead us. Because when you don't do your job, we have to do it. I'm ill-equipped, I'm one person. There's no reason why my neighbors, my people in my community, they won't dial 911. They dial 402-830-2587. Look at me, unarmed. I'm in danger on the front line, and it's not my job.
Thank you, ma'am.
If we're going to put more money into them, they have to put more faith in us. And that's all I got to say. Have a good day.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. Anybody else from the public wanting to comment on this matter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Derek Hurd, 3702 North 65th Ave., Omaha, Nebraska 68104. I stand before you today, not to advocate for defunding, but to demand responsible investment into true public safety by challenging this grant for Douglas County Sheriff's request for additional funding. This isn't a benign grant. This money directed to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement-led crisis intervention explicitly weaponizes racial targeting. Black individuals are booked into our county jail at almost four times the rate of white people. In 2019, black residents, 13.7% of the population, accounted for 42.6% of all arrests. Our county incarcerates black people at 6.5 times the rate of white individuals. This funding directly amplifies these disparities and fuels mass incarceration, tearing black families apart. These funds also escalate dangers for our brown communities, given the sheriff's documented partnership with ICE, leading to raids and deportations. This isn't theatrical. In just the past eight months, Omaha tragically witnessed four lives taken by law enforcement, including Janidi Ibrahim and Edward Henry. Approving these funds enables this dangerous premise by bolstering Douglas County law enforcement with lethal racial bias. Commissioners, this specific increase in powers clear racial targeting, challenging equal protection, our communities fed up. We demand system reform, block this measure, instead, reallocate these funds towards comprehensive de-escalation and lower uses of force training for sheriff's office, and invest in the community-led mental health response, youth development, violence interruption, and job training for residents in North and South Omaha. This directly addresses violence and overpolicing. Approving this request without accountability is a profound betrayal. The man that was speaking earlier, he sounded very nervous, because he knows by approving this, we're one step closer to a sundown town where racial disparities are so profound that we can't even walk outside past a certain time of day for our own well-being due to the slave patrol. Reject this dangerous premise, demand a full independent racial impact assessment of all Douglas County law enforcement spending, prioritize true safety and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wanting to comment on item T? If not, Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Borgeson?
Oh, one more, I'll wait. Can I let her go first?
Can I let her go first?
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, good morning again, Commissioners. My name is Clarice Dombek. My address is 901 Farnum Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68102. I did not plan on speaking today. Last time I came before you, I shared a very personal story about my own experience with a special gang unit. And today, when I listened to the officer that spoke, trying to justify the reason why they needed this grant, I heard him say Irvington, Irvington, Irvington about policing in Irvington, and I'm just thinking about, who lives in Irvington? Well, there is a high concentration of Douglas County voucher holders that live out in Irvington. There's a high concentration of OHA voucher holders that live out in Irvington. The black population in neighborhoods, in census tracts, in census block groups in Irvington is twice the population of the rest of Omaha. To me, what that police officer was saying is that we want to be able to use these funds to overpolice these black, brown, and poor communities. That's simply something that I cannot support and why I'm asking the Commissioners to oppose accepting that grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you. A couple of things. Also for the stats, you mentioned trafficking, and so I would like to have the stats of what you have for the number of trafficking cases that you've mentioned. And then, I just want to be clear, we are not... And I've gotten emails about this already. We are not defunding law enforcement. Commissioner Friend brought up about being elected officials and up for election. I am next year. But as an elected official, my job is to ask questions. And I'm sorry that the questions happen to be your budget right now, but there's... You saw earlier, we questioned the Health Center. We questioned the Community Mental Health Center. We'll be questioning many more, but that's our job. And yes, the sheriff is an elected official. We are elected officials, but we hold the budget authority, and I think that's our job to ask questions, not just to rubber stamp what somebody asked for. So, I want to be clear. I mean, I have... I come from a law enforcement family. My grandpa was an Omaha police officer, the best of the best. He was a community officer in South Omaha, and I couldn't be more proud. And I am proud of our law enforcement, but I'm also a proud elected official that has a duty to ask questions, and I'm not trying to be offensive by it. I'm just asking questions because there are a lot of questions as to what we are doing with this department that has never been done in history. That's why I'm asking the questions. So I don't mean to offend. I don't mean to make it sound like I'm anti-law enforcement because that's the farthest thing from the truth, but my job is to do what I'm doing, and that is to ask questions and to try to gather more information, and that's what I'm going to continue to do as an elected official who is up for reelection next year. The other thing is, is that, you know, I still question the need for this. You've got OKD who's got a gang unit, a helicopter unit, a patrol unit, a bike unit. I don't think we need any more units covering Omaha. If we have the problems that we have in unincorporated Douglas County that I'm hearing we have, then that's where we should be focusing our attention, not doing traffic stops in Omaha, not doing racing in Omaha. But if our issues are unincorporated Douglas County and we need officers and our deputies in unincorporated Douglas County, then we should be focusing our attention in unincorporated Douglas County. So that's why I want to have the data, that's why I want to look at that and continue to ask questions. Again, I'm asking them respectfully. I'm not doing this as... And we've known each other for a long time, Captain Sellers, and I have been a big supporter of the sheriff's office for all of the years. I'm just asking questions. That's my duty to do, especially when it comes to budget dollars in very hard times that are coming up, and people may not believe it, but there are. They're very hard, and so I'm going to continue to ask them. And again, I apologize upfront if people are offended by that, but I don't mean that, but I'm going to continue to ask my questions, and I think you know that of me for the years that we've worked together.
Absolutely. May I make one comment on that? I know that Omaha will not come out to investigate the gang-related activities in Irvington. This grant is just to address, and it's cleared up with the public behind me, this isn't about going into those areas and making arrests. It's identifying gang violence and how... What do we do to address it? It's not necessarily arrests. It's going in and making a difference somehow, whether that's walking on foot through the area, talking to the children, or everybody in the area, and trying to talk them on how to stay out of that culture, staying out of gangs or gun activity. That's what it's about. It's not about making arrests. It's making a difference in the area that Omaha will not come outside the city to do. So that's all... That's what this is about. Additionally, the grant will be rescinded, I found out at the end of this month, so if we wait till July, it's going to be too late.
Thank you, Captain. I do have another hand on Zoom, so I'm going to go there. I think... Is that you, Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm good to go?
Yep. Good to go.
Okay. Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. I am, of course, an opponent of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office receiving this grant. I think that instead of trying to add another person to this unit, they should be focused more on what they already have their hands in. And after this week and getting the information about Mr. Henry dying in his cell after banging on the window for three hours to get attention, him and his cellie banged on the glass for three hours to get attention to him having a heart attack, and instead of the nurses or anybody in there helping him, the deputies walked by laughing at him, okay? And he died in his cell and his cellie had to deal... Has to deal with this trauma. And the county has already placed a couple of people on leave for this mishap, but that's not breaking news right now, okay? And so, I don't think that we should be putting more money into a special operation unit to be patrolling the streets when they still can't even handle what's going on in the Douglas County jail, okay? And that's my piece on that.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to comment on item T?
There needs to be clarification, though, that the sheriff's department doesn't operate the jail or oversee the jail, so I just want to make sure that people know that, so it's not them that are issues at the jail.
Department of Corrections, yeah. All right, so there is a motion on the table to lay over till July 8th. There was a second for that motion. We've gotten some context on that, so we'll first vote on that, and if it fails, we'll go back to the original motion. If it succeeds, then double carry.
Commissioner Friend voting no. All other Commissioners voting yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments on item T. That concludes our consent agenda. We're going to move forward with our overall agenda with section five, which is recognitions and proclamations. We do have a recognition of a county employee retirement, which is for Darla Sue May, who has worked for the Department of Corrections for 23 years. I don't think she's here today, but we do want to thank her for her service to the citizens of Douglas County, and I'll take a motion second to approve. Motion by Borgson, second by Rogers. Please vote. Did I miss it? Oh, yeah. Thanks. Yeah, I'm going to go back in a second. I missed that. But we'll still vote on the recognition for Darla and thank her again.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, I missed the bottom part of page six. My apologies. We'll go back to new business. We have two related items. First, item A is a brief discussion regarding the appointment of the Douglas County treasurer position, which is now officially vacant due to previous treasurer Ewing becoming mayor of Omaha. And so, before we discuss it, Teresa, sorry, I didn't give you an advance notice, but I know that the requirements, legally speaking, are pretty generic overall as far as timeline and requirements. Do you recall sufficiently to give us a brief overview?
Sure, I'll give it a shot. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So, the statutes regarding vacancy are all in chapter 32. The board has 45 days from the vacancy to go ahead and fill the spot absent a showing of good cause. And then, with regards to requirements to hold the position, the person needs to be a resident of Douglas County, and then after being appointed, there are some continuing education that that person will have to do, but that's not required for the appointment.
Thank you, Teresa, for that. So, 45 days upon official vacancy, but for additional context, there's no statutory parameters on... The board has to take an open application process. The board has to appoint internally. There's no statutory parameters on that. It's kind of board discretion. Is that correct?
That is correct, and the board's done it a number of different ways in the past, but the statute doesn't spell out the process.
Very good. Okay, so with that being said, as the board knows and the public knows, the board has gone in different directions in the past. You know, there's a somewhat unofficial precedence of... Especially if there's less than two years on the term, we tend to look internally for... To see if maybe the chief deputy might be interested in being appointed, just like Mr. Goodwilly was appointed to Assessor in recent times. If there's a longer tenure still left, like three years or more, or over two years in general, perhaps that would give better reasoning for an open application process, but there is no official rule on it at the board level, so that's where the discretion lies. Additional context is that we did... Some of us, including myself, did speak to Jane Alexander, who is the chief deputy under John Ewing's tenure. She was the chief deputy there for the last, I think, what is it, eight years or so, a good while, and she did have some interest for a moment there, but a couple of things were barriers, including residency. I believe her house is like a block south Douglas County, so that was one of the barriers alongside some others, but she did have interest for a moment. She obviously has been there for quite a while as chief deputy, and if she were to have been appointed treasurer, she did have an interest in appointing Tim Kavanaugh as chief deputy, and so this is going to lead to the discussion here in a second, so that's why I'm explaining all of this. So, she had an interest in appointing Tim Kavanaugh as her chief deputy for the purpose of taking care of the office and the transition from now until January 2027. Keep in mind that this position is up for election next year. So whoever is appointed carries the office through January 2027, at which point the new treasurer through reelection becomes the treasurer officially of the office through the election process. So, with that being said, I don't know where my board members lie, but include this as my round, please, Ron. I have been leaning towards a non-political option to take care of the office during this transitional period. We've all gotten multiple phone calls from multiple people that have interest in the position, so it could become a matter of, you know, getting enough votes to, you know, appoint somebody who has an interest in the position, whether it be from our respective political parties, our respective networks and friends and whatnot, or pursuing a non-political option to take care of the office for the next year and a half through the election process, and then whoever wants it through the election process can go for it through the election process. So, that's what I'm leaning towards as one Commissioner at a seven. That non-political option that I'm pitching would include... Would revolve around Jane Alexander still, but since she's not able to become treasurer, she would remain the chief deputy, and then Tim Kavanaugh, who she wanted as her chief deputy, would be appointed to the treasurer position solely to keep that kind of team in play through the next year, through the election, and then whoever wins the election can take the position. Both Jane and Tim Kavanaugh would not run for the position in 2026. There... I believe both of them are more than willing to publicly state that. They would not run for the position next year. They would want to just team up to take care of the office through next year. So, that's kind of where I'm at as one Commissioner at a seven, but this is an open discussion to discuss opinions on the matter. So, we'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I just have an informational question, and maybe you can give us this exact date. If you take into consideration the date of the vacancy, what is 45 days?
Teresa, or anybody else have that number for a high chance?
If I may, maybe Teresa has it, but we received a letter... The Dana Douglas County Clerk, the County Clerk's office received a letter from Mr. Ewing on Friday, June 6th, that he was resigning as county treasurer.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I think your 45 days runs on or around the 21st or 22nd of July, so you don't have a whole lot of meetings between now and then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Want to finish your round or anything else, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
That's it, thanks.
Okay. And Commissioner Morgan?
And all of us have had conversations. I appreciate the chairperson's statements. I had visited with Jane Alexander, and you stated it very correctly, Chairman Rogers, that... Garcia, about a talk with Jane Alexander, who has done an excellent job, and before her, Tim Kavanaugh, who's not, if I can state it, related to Jim Kavanaugh, because I wanted the public to know that. I think it's an excellent choice, and I'd make a motion that he become the treasurer if it's appropriate, and that Jane Alexander be the deputy chief, and I know both of them do not plan to run, which is, I think, important at this late date, and we know that there'll be a good continuation of the job that John Ewing has done and did as our treasurer over the last 12, 14 years at least. And so that's what I would say to this, and I'd make that as a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Just to clarify, today's only for discussion, and we can take action at the next board meeting, though, if we want to, through resolution or motion, but your opinion is appreciated, and we'll take a motion at the next meeting in regards to this topic. For today, it's just discussion.
Although we're not related, we are friends. Tim and I went to Creighton Law School together, and I think he would be an excellent interim treasurer. So if and when your motion comes back around, I think I can give a second round.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And I think, yeah, this is...
And I meant that respectfully. You're not related.
I appreciate that. Levy, it happens all the time. You know, I think this is an indication of how we're trying to avoid politics in this and just try to get the best people in the position. Both Tim and Jane have performed excellently, in my opinion, as chief deputies of that office, and we're going through some stuff there in terms of transition that people need to hit the ground running and understand the expensive multimillion-dollar project that we're engaged in there right now, and so it would also help to have some continuity and institutional knowledge, I think, going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Anybody else on this topic for discussion? Commissioner Morgan, is that a light or no?
I might just make one comment. And I mean this very, very respectfully, and I have goosebumps. It's hard to say. Jane Alexander lost her husband a few weeks ago, and that was quite... Jane Alexander lost her husband a few weeks ago, and that was quite a change and difficult. And I respect and appreciate how she continues to do an unbelievable job for this county. So, our prayers go out to Jane and her family.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Anybody else on this topic? If not, we will come back to it at the next Board meeting for official action. A related topic here, item B is a resolution to give Jane Alexander the temporary salary of interim Treasurer as statute, since she was the Chief Deputy. In between the process of the Treasurer resigning and the Board taking action to appoint, she does become the interim Treasurer by statute, so that merits the interim Treasurer salary just for that time period. So this is the resolution that does that. Is there a motion, a second for that resolution? Motion by Morgan? Second by Friend? Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote.
And this, Dana Douglas County Clerk, so this would be retro, this would be retroactive to June 9th then? Or, well, my apologies, I'm looking at the third, whereas this Board desires to compensate Chief Deputy Alexander at the same rate previously established for the County Treasurer effective as of the date of this resolution. Okay, the date of this resolution. Okay, I'm sorry, I was just thinking about payroll standpoint, what we were going to do, but it's from today's date going until the new Treasurer. Okay. And-
Was that the intention for the draft here?
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator, yes, it was the intent for it to become effective the date of signing or the adoption of the resolution. And that was per the County Attorney's advice.
Okay, got it, thank you. All right, this is motion and second, let's vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move forward here in our agenda. We have one presentation today from the County Lobbyist, Sean Kelly, and Julia here too? Yeah, Julia, come on up, and we'll get a brief overview of the legislative session that concluded recently.
Good morning, Chairman Garcia, members of the Douglas County Board, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave. Appearing today to give you a recap of the legislative session for 2025, first year of the biennium. So the legislature adjourned signing day on June 2nd, which was actually the 89th day of the 90-day session. It was certainly a long session. 715 legislative bills were introduced, 18 constitutional amendments were also introduced. Of those, 149 bills passed, and 113 other bills were amended into those 149. So, in sum, 262 bills ultimately passed the legislature. There was 106 priority bills, 68 of those were passed, two were vetoed by Governor Pillen, and neither one of those bills that was vetoed overcame the Governor's veto. I would say the main theme of this legislative session generally was the budget. So a couple issues made the next biennial budget difficult for the state. One was the decrease in the FMAP percentage, which is the federal portion of Medicaid, was lowered, so the state had to shore up that shortfall. And then in addition to that was a reduction in the revenue forecast for the state. So, and that really took an odd cadence this session. Usually, that budget forecast is done prior to the budget being advanced from the Appropriations Committee. It actually happened the day after it was advanced, so you get the budget book and read through and see where all the funding is. This year, that budget book was not very helpful because the Appropriations Committee had to go back and meet and cut additional dollars. For the Douglas County Board, there was three resolutions that this Board adopted prior to the session. One was inheritance tax to oppose those efforts unless there was dollar-for-dollar replacement that was equitable and sustainable. Secondly was the Mullins v. Boxbeute case, which clarified county jail good-time calculations. And then lastly was to protect and avoid any unfunded mandates. So, obviously, the inheritance tax bill to reduce and really just reduce the classes and raise the exemptions was introduced by Senator Clements. That's been his priority year after year for several years. Again, that was the case. It was his priority bill, LB 468. That bill ultimately was filibustered and failed to advance with 31 clot of votes, so falling two votes short of advancing. The Mullins v. Boxbeute case was introduced actually by the Judiciary Committee as a whole at our request. So good bipartisan support on that. It was a Speaker priority and ultimately passed with 47 yes votes. As the session began, this Board took additional positions on three other bills. One was at Director Holmes' request, which was LB 309, had to do on safe battery collection. That bill was amended in LB 36 and passed. A resolution to oppose, LB 541, which would eliminate online voter registration, do a lot of different items with voting. And finally was LB 608, which would provide corrections of county corrections officers and state corrections officers under the First Responder Recruitment and Retention Act. So Douglas County Correctional Officers dependents can receive waived tuition at the University of Nebraska system beginning July 1, 2027. So hopefully that will be a helpful tool for them to retain our corrections officers. I've highlighted several other bills of interest. Marcos and the administration has done a nice job of providing a short list to the Board throughout the session of different unfunded mandate bills that we are watching. I did note in the report, you know, if inheritance comes back, knowing in the back of my mind, of course, it's coming back. And that is the first interim study that I highlighted in my report, which is LR 254. And Senator Clements is seeking some motor vehicle tax funding or shifting to probably trade off reduction in inheritance tax funds. So there's 119 interim resolutions introduced. Those typically, and hopefully won't begin until after Labor Day, but we expect a busy fall with several items of interest for Douglas County. So all in all, I think this Board and Douglas County as a whole had a good legislative session. Our priorities were successful, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. And finally, thanks to Chair Garcia, as all you Chairs have known, I bug you a lot with questions and clarifications. And thanks again to the administration staff for all the information provided. So, it's a lot of fiscal notes, and with 715 bills introduced, there's a lot, a lot of material to review. So, appreciate it, I'll take any questions.
Very good, thank you so much. We'll go to discussion, starting with Commissioner Morgan.
Okay. Thank you for this presentation, and more importantly, thank you for the great job you do in the Legislature, you and Julie. I've known you since you were at prep, and your parents have to be most proud, and I'm sure your dad is looking down often at the great job that you do in such a respectful manner, and I hear it from state senators. I appreciate this update. I wish, especially, there could have been some traction for that maximum of 5% increase on just residential property. I mean, there's so many other states that are doing it, and when I see the increases of 100% on 15th and Williams Street on a home that was purchased some years ago, not that many years, and now doubles, I went down to look at it, thanks to an email from Roger Garcia. It's disappointing to see those kinds of increase to our people, or go six blocks to the south and see an increase of 450% on cash flows. You know, some of that really desperately affects the citizens, and I thank you again for the good work that you do and continue to try to do for this Board and the people of Douglas County.
Well, thanks for those comments. And to your point that there are members of the Legislature that are still looking at that, and that's a legislative resolution that I'm sure we'll have an interim hearing this fall.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Was your light on?
Yes, it was. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean, good to see you again, and thanks for all the information during the session, 150 days, hopefully you get a vacation here pretty quick. Hey, put your, I always liked it when people ask me this, put your, take your crystal ball and set it out in front of you and Julia's office, and what do you think, and this is going to sound inflammatory toward the Legislature, but why should it matter? I used to be inflammatory right to their face. And matter of fact, I will be inflammatory to them if they want me to, under certain circumstances. What happens when the Legislature and the Governor realize, let's assume for a minute, what happens when the Legislature and the Governor realize that their efforts on curtailing property tax increases in the state of Nebraska were not as effective as they perceived they would be? What is their next move? I mean, if you had that crystal ball, what's their next move? There's only one, there's only, here's my point, there's only one inheritance tax. They're limiting the amount that all of the counties can spend, but that has nothing to do with the increases in property tax rates, theoretically. So in other words, there's a rate set by all the counties, and then when assessments go up, it doesn't make any difference, even if they lower the levy lid. I've been preaching this forever and ever, and once those assessments go up, to a certain degree, you can lower that levy lid, and everybody's going, well, I'm moving to Arizona, I can't afford Nebraska anymore. What's their next move? In your opinion?
I would think it's something similar to the lines of what we saw in the special session, and that is raising revenue through reduction of sales tax exemptions and increasing sales tax on certain items. That would just go for other property tax efforts.
Okay, and a final thing. It's arguable that the sales tax code has not been fundamentally changed for 35 years. And the odds of that actually happening are slim to none. You pull a special session and you try to recodify the sales tax, you're going to get, you're going to get blistered. So maybe you're right, maybe that's what they'll try to do. But again, we're talking about that three-legged stool, right? Sales, property, and income. Property tax in the state of Nebraska is generating almost 40% of the revenue. For the schools, for everybody functioning off of it, sales tax generates what, 18%? So if they have the intestinal fortitude to come in and actually do that, there's, there'll be a solid fight from the lobby. My question is, why bother? Why don't they just, okay, well, now we're just playing. Mr. Chair, Sean, I don't want to put him on the spot, he'll get in trouble. My point is, unless you take a serious look at capping assessments across the state, they're spinning their wheels. That's my final point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, thanks for this, Sean. I want to congratulate you and Julie for staving off the inheritance tax disaster that we all were concerned about. And that's a signal victory, I know that it wasn't easy. And so, thank you, that really helps us going into this budget cycle, because, you know, our concerns are revenue streams, and that's a big one for us. So, I want to say, I know that you worked hard on this, and it was work well done, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Borgeson?
I just want to add my thank yous as well. You guys did a spectacular job with a long, hard session. But the inheritance tax issue isn't dead, I mean, he's already stated that it's going to be back next year. And what I found was real interesting is, I had sent a PowerPoint down to every single Senator on how it affects Douglas County, and there's still a very misunderstanding of what the inheritance tax does and who it affects. So we have some more educational work to do. Again, I don't know what the form is going to look like come next year, but I think it's important for us to continue to try to educate our senators across the board, not just Douglas County. Because again, it's a revenue source for us, that if it goes away, where they're trying to reduce property taxes, does nothing but the opposite.
Right. And that was actually really effective testimony by Lori Pursh, when she testified in opposition, and kind of echoed Senator Jacobson's thoughts on the committee, which is, if you reduce it, it's a property tax increase.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that's difficult to balance for them when it's their number one priority.
Right, exactly. So we have work to do through the interim as well, on top of all the interim studies. But again, just thank you, I think you guys do a great job for us down at the Legislature.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Kent, you got a burning comments, I think?
Yes, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. I just wanted to thank this Board for your leadership and support on the battery bill. That will help address that growing public safety issue with lithium ion battery fires. And coincidentally, because it passed in one session, that's almost unheard of for that kind of legislation across the nation. It is getting a lot of interest nationwide. I'm happy to report that both Senator Hughes and myself will be on a national webinar on July 24th, talking about that, the process here, what worked here. And we're excited to be actually at the forefront of leading on that issue across the nation. So, thank you very much for your leadership on that.
Awesome, thank you so much. Anybody else on the legislative update? If not, thank you, Sean, thank you, Julia, for all your work, appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to Section 7, Public Hearings. We have two listed here, the first one, item A, being a public hearing for Class C license for HW 204 LLC DVA Hideaway Lounge at the address stated on the final agenda there, with manager application for Alyssa Stuto Boyd. We will open up the public hearing at this point, and, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave. Here on behalf of HW 204 LLC, which is doing business as the Hideaway Lounge, located on 3030 South 203rd Street, Suite 103 in Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. The manager for the application will be Alyssa Stuto Boyd. The hours of operation will be 1:00 PM to 2:00 AM. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. The business is currently operating under a temporary permit, and this business has been in business for quite some time, and this is just a changeover in ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions for this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board?
Second.
Most improved by Borgeson, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you for coming down. Before I address item B, I had a couple notes here, one from Sharon about notification not having been submitted for 7B. Are we okay to address this item today? Was there, did we cover our ground?
Dana Douglas County Clerk, so this location is currently a come-and-go, and so, and it's switching over to a mega saver. So, we had still encouraged them to do the notification policy, but it appears they have not. But it is, it has been, it has been selling liquor at this location for a while now, it's just, it's a new ownership. So, I don't have specific examples, but I know this Board has waived the requirement before for similar situations, if that puts your mind at ease. But anyway, it's, so it's, just to recap, this location has been selling liquor, it's just a new owner now, so they have to, we have to approve a new license. But the notification policy, if, I should say this, if it was met, we were not, there was no confirmation to us that they did in fact notify neighboring properties.
Commissioners, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, I'm not sure if this is the same one, Dan, but I did get a call from- I'm not sure if this is the same one, Dan, but I did get a call from somebody who said it was change of ownership, but it's the same service, they're, the, the public won't know any difference, it's just the ownership is changing. Mine, I wasn't aware that it was going to be a different store. I was just told that the ownership of the store was changing.
Okay.
And, and that, that there was no reason for notification because it's just change of the ownership, but it's still the same thing.
I just want to make sure we're okay to actually still address the item. So, let me go ahead and open the public hearing officially here for Item B, public hearing for Class D license for TFL Incorporated DBA Mega Saver at the address listed there on the final agenda, manager application for Kamal Samiv. Uh, public hearing is now open for Item B.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Ray. Do I have to state my home address?
Clerk?
Uh, if you could just spell your last name for me.
Ray, R-A-Y.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'm here on behalf of TFL regarding the notification policy. When I received the email saying we need to, needed to do that, I was, I've never seen it before, so I was super confused. I called, um, whoever had sent the original email, I called the liquor commissioners, I called Douglas County Clerk, everywhere I could call, no one had an answer for me. Then finally, in Lincoln, they said to reach out to Carmen Johnson. She said she reached out to Douglas County and they stated I didn't have to complete the notification policy, so we didn't. If in the future we do have to do that, I'm more than happy to, I was just confused by the whole process. But otherwise, if there's any questions regarding the new gas station.
Okay. Do we have a question? Commissioner Fahy?
Who from Douglas County told you you didn't need to complete the notice? Do you know the department?
I'm not sure. Carmen Johnson said she reached out, she didn't give me a name at all.
Commissioner, Commissioner Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. This probably is that same item that, uh, the person I talked to on the phone said all it was was a change in ownership. Cause I asked, whoever I talked to on the phone, I asked, so the public's not going to really know any, any difference, it's a kind of behind the scenes change in ownership. And they, I was told, yes. So unless this is a different, did anybody talk to Patrick Bloomingdale to your knowledge?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That, that may be a different one, I just think it's kind of, uh, very similar then. You might be seeing one down the road then.
Okay. Other questions on this item? Commissioner Fahy still?
Yeah. Um, so is it changing, is the, is the DBA changing?
Yes, it's changing to mega saver from come and go.
Okay, so that would seem to be at variance with what you were told. And this isn't a perfunctory duty, like this is, I get calls about these from people that have problems with gas stations selling alcohol, so I'm, I don't personally feel like this, I've got the information I need on this. And, and all due respect, Ms. Ray, it's incumbent on the business, it, it's unfortunately not the county's job to explain it to you on the notice requirements. That's why most businesses that come before us hire legal counsel for the purpose of fulfilling their duties on getting these checklisted. So, um, I'm, at this point, I'm inclined not to vote for it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Fahy. I think one of the actions could be just to hold it over until we get that proper notice perhaps, I don't know.
So the, uh, it would, we, we would have time to do that. So there, um, first of all, I go forward, I apologize for any confusion that
No, that's fine.
Me and my team may have caused, but, um, anyway, the Liquor Control Commission would need action by July seventeenth, so could lay it over till July eighth. Uh, and then we could help you, um, there's really like no official form, it's, it's just, uh, finding the, uh, property owners within five hundred feet of the establishment and sending them a letter, uh, just telling them that, hey, we got a, uh, liquor license public hearing on July eighth from the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and, uh, just giving them the time and the place.
Right. So that's where I was confused, because in the letter it says the Nebraska Abstractors Act, someone who's registered under that needs to prepare the list, but then I'm being told I can just look up the businesses and then send the letter. So, no one was able to give me like a real answer when it came to this letter.
Well, we know, I know we, uh, I mean, I don't know what Sharon Burke might do in the Commissioner's office, but in the Clerk's office, we're generally not, uh, checking to see if, um, someone did the Nebraska abstractors, uh, thing. We just want to make sure that there's, uh, either people were notified within five hundred feet of the property, or there's, there is nobody within five hundred feet, you know, just something like that.
Okay.
We'll go to Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, clarify that, um, the only thing that's changing is the ownership of it. You, it's already happening. There's already a liquor license.
Yes.
That's in someone else's name, and now it's going to be in the new name.
Well, no, we had to, TFL Inc., Mega Saver, had to apply for the new liquor license. Right. So we have the temporary permit, but it's like signage, everything is being changed over to Mega Saver, it's not come and go at all anymore.
Okay. Okay. Then that does make it a little different.
Okay.
Unfortunately. So, and I'm trying to picture where this is at and how many, the radius of five hundred, around there.
There's
I don't even know if there is that.
I know there's a, a club car wash, probably within that five hundred feet, but after that, I don't think there's really anything else.
That's what I, see, that's the other thing, is I don't think, and that's where we, um, waived, if you will, because there isn't anybody to send the notices to.
Okay.
So, again, I think we have a little bit of time just to go and look and just absolutely make sure
Mm-hmm.
That every, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and if there is people to notify, just get that notification out of the change that you just told me was going to happen, even though in essence the operational part of it isn't going to change any. But I wouldn't want you to get in any trouble if that's not done.
Right.
So, um, what, what was the date of our next meeting?
July eighth.
What?
July eighth.
So July, can you have it done by July eighth?
Of course, yes.
Okay. And then we'll just have it back on the agenda for then, but then I think that way it covers you
Okay.
As well. Um, so just have that done and we should be good.
Of course.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Fahy?
I, I do want to be clear, I will vote no on this again, if it, I may not have four votes on it, but I, I don't want TFL to come back here on the eighth with another, hey, we tried and we just couldn't figure it out. So I would strongly advise you or someone at TFL to seek legal counsel, but it's not our duty to explain. I know that sounds counterintuitive. It's not the county's job, and it's certainly not this board's best use of its time to sit here and go back and forth trying to figure out if you've got your i's and t's dotted and crossed respectively. So please make sure that's done on the eighth, or I will vote no on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board?
Yeah, I think in the, sorry, Tracy York County Attorney's Office, I think what we've done in the past is kept the, uh, public hearing open and laid it over. And then you continue it when you pick it back up on the eighth.
Okay. What Teresa said, motion by, excuse me, Commissioner Borgson, second by Morgan.
Well, Dan S., Douglas County Clerk, I mean, if the public hearing's open, then we can't, we're not supposed to be voting on anything, or do we normally just, I honestly can't remember if we've actually voted before to do that, if we just stated that's what's going to happen.
I honestly don't recall either, Dan. That's a good question.
Should I just reopen it and keep it open?
I think leave it open, we've done that for sure. That's, that's how we've done that, and I, um, I think it's, I think it's okay the way Dan has stated it as well. I apologize, I also, I also don't have a clear recollection, but if it's open, I think it can be taken back up on the eighth.
Okay. So we'll just keep it open and take it back up on the eighth then?
Sounds good.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you for being here. Is she gone? Okay. We'll keep moving here, um, we do have some stuff under committee, but before we get there, Commissioner Borgson, is there still an HR committee at, at one o'clock? Okay, if that's the case, I did have a, a quick conversation with Kim on the side. We're willing to, uh, hold over till the next meeting, the continuum of care, grant assessment report and strategic plan. It is kind of tied loosely to the JDI resolution as far as like, um, what's been going on with stakeholders and focus groups and system points in regards to trying to analyze what we should do next, uh, as a juvenile justice system. So that will be a more comprehensive report that we can hold over till July eighth for, um, Item C one, the presentation, just for the sake of time. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have a question?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I think we're running out of time here, but if we could have, there's no backup on this in the thing, if we could have maybe, um, something before then in terms of the backup documentation, that'd be great.
Kim Havakety, County, Deputy County Administrator. Commissioner, we do already have copies for, that we would use today, so we can hand them out so that you'd have them in advance.
Oh, great. Okay. So, uh, we will hand out those presentations, but then officially cover it on July eighth. So is there a unanimous consensus just to hold that over till July eighth? Okay. I think I will still do two, only because the fiscal year does end on June thirtieth. It'd be ideal to do them together, because they are loosely related, but I think from a fiscal standpoint, we may have to still do two, just to be safe. So let's go ahead and discuss that question, uh, and the topic overall. Uh, so it was a resolution to conclude the JDI role and position and initiative on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, again, part of the logic, it's kind of dual-fold. One piece of it is the financial piece, this is a state-run position in the Office of Probation, who are our partners that we want to support, but at the same time, we do have our fiscal concerns in regards to, uh, relooking at everything that the county pays for and trying to, um, be a bit more cautious of our, the things that we are sustaining moving forward. So, uh, with this position being a state position, that was a part of the, the logic there in regards to, um, the conclusion of it. But also, the second piece, which is the more important piece, is the comprehensive focus groups and stakeholder meetings that have been going on for, what, about almost a year now or so? Uh, trying to assess what are the actual gaps and voids in the juvenile justice system at this point, uh, in twenty twenty-five, and building a strategic plan on what we need to tackle moving forward, uh, twenty twenty-five and beyond. So that's what the presentation will be about. So basically reassessing and shifting, uh, fifteen years later, I think the JDI initiative was started in twenty-ten, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, it's been crucial to bring stakeholders together. Commissioner Rogers definitely speak much more deeply to it than I could. Uh, I have stated in the past that, uh, the fact that those stakeholders were around the table and actually talking to each other was an important kind of, uh, uh, piece of the JDI initiative, and we want to make sure that, uh, moving forward, there is still continued dialogue both between stakeholders in the system, but also with external stakeholders, partners in the community as well. So, uh, that's the very, uh, kind of high-level overview of the logic there with the resolution, which you should have a copy of in your book there. So, discussion on that, well, motion is second first, if there is one to discuss. Motion, my friend? Second by Kavanaugh, discussion. Uh, we'll go Kavanaugh then Borgson. Go ahead.
I, I appreciate the overview, uh, Mr. Chairman, on this, and, um, this does a couple of things in his resolution. The board expresses their sincere gratitude, uh, to the folks who, uh, worked on this and their diligent and dedicated work. Um, but it also resolves, the board will conclude the JDI effort and funding as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. As you indicated, this is not the end of JDI, it's just a, um, a state, uh, assumption of these duties. Is that correct?
I think that'll be up to the stakeholders. The funding would, would definitely cease on, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. There's other JDIs that have continued kind of more, uh, either informally or partially, I know Grand Island, Hall County has, uh, a JDI initiative with maybe a part-timer. I think Sarpy County perhaps some, has some kind of version of it. Lancaster has a, a version of it, though they did cease their funding in previous years as well. So I think it's going to be up to stakeholders, plus also the overall strategic plan that we'll hear more about on July eighth in regards to what is the best vehicle to move forward as a, a system and coalition.
So this will be part of the discussion that we're going to have with the larger strategic plan.
I'd say so.
Thank you. Oh, what's the county's expenditure annually for JDI?
A rough number, Kim or Patrick or Lori? Is it like one for the full timer plus benefits?
It's right around a hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty percent is paid from county general funds, fifty percent is paid from Sherwood grant funds.
And that was the agreement one year ago for, for one year's time, and then we were going to look at it again at this point. Mr. Borgson?
Um, I guess, I'm a little bit surprised this is kind of coming without, like, this is, I didn't even know this was going to be a thing. Which, for what we're funding, it seems to me, and the system issues that we have, there was at one point talk about a shift to have the position work with youth center and the courts, for lack of a better term, as somewhat of an expediter to keep tabs on cases so that we're sure that they move through the system correctly. And that just, conversation never really happened. I'm a little bit disappointed that we haven't had that because we're getting rid of an employee that has intimate knowledge of our system that I think could be beneficial to us. And without having the background of what all these meetings have occurred or taken place and what the outcomes are, how we're arriving at ending that, other than it's just a budgetary thing, um, it concerns me that we're, we're doing this in the manner in which we're doing it. So, I don't know how to rectify that now, because if the funding is going to be gone by June thirtieth, we're in a really big predicament. But at the same time, if there's things within this report where we utilize that expertise from an employee who has been intimately involved in our system, then I think we're missing out on opportunity. So, I'm, I'm just not sure where to go from here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can give a little background on that. So I think, um, to say probably three or four years ago, state probation started indicating that they wanted to, uh, to me, pull out a little bit of JDI. And before, it was, it was totally there at the state, and the state, state probation took ownership of it.
Right.
I have my own speculations of reasons, but they start pulling back. Last year, they made a statement or two years ago particularly saying that their role now was to support the locals, and that, um, they would support the locals, but the, and that meant basically following what the local JDI committees wanted to do. So as of that last year, the local JDI committee moved to put an emphasis on case processing and length of stays. Now, uh, when that happened, um, that would have to happen with the help of probation because they had a lot of the information, and the coordinator was the connector to do that. Now, um, as of that, I think, you know, and this is my personal opinion, I doubt the commitment that's been put there to, even though the local committee approved, that they would emphasize expediting, we've had reports, we've had other things, and that had moved. The lady you see every time talks about the length of stays, and that rests there in probation, and some of it rests here with the county in respects to predisposition. So, um, I think that's where, where that is in that respect. I do, um, to the point of the funding, I think for the last couple of years, it's been trending that the funding has come more here. At first, the funding had switched to coming out of the, um, state money, then the crime commission made a decision that they didn't want that there, and then, uh, probation took it, and then we split it for the last couple of terms. So I think it's hard to have the discussion without, um, seeing the presentation, but, you know, personally, we could use the Sherwood money to fund the position total. But, you know, personally, we could use the Sherwood money to fund the position totally. I don't know what the presentation is going to look at, but, you know, from discussions that I've had, my understanding, there had been some feedback saying that it may have run its course, things of that sort. It's true that nationally, it has been an evolution and a lot of things have got incorporated. Now, to my knowledge, they have not been eliminating the JDI efforts. They reformed them in another way. And I do think, I don't know what the decision will be with this. If the decision is, I want to make sure that there's some effort to try to thank the people for those years. But based on what happens next week and what that report says, if discussions I've had and some of the people at the table with this are saying it's not working, it's not working because people haven't ran through the tape. They haven't finished this. Every week, we're here. Well, not every week, but we see the data and there is a clear-cut lack of services that come from the state. I think the board has to take a little bit of ownership too because we haven't implemented efforts to try to get the predisposition, pre-adjudication services there. So the history of it is probation statewide pullback. They've shown a kind of lack of want to be involved in it. One reason I think they don't want to be involved in it is because there's certain pushback and heat that's coming with that. I think the heat was saw in respects to the bill that was before the legislature this year that asked for the jurisdiction to be moved out of the judicial branch into the executive branch because there was a lot of discontent. And on the request of the Chief Justice, I think it was asked to stay there. So that's my first fore on the history.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Others, I'll get, I'll take around quick. You know, we did visit the topic last year when it was more of a budgetary discussion in regards to do we want to continue this, especially since it would come 100% under the county's kind of funding. We did split it between 50% general funds, 50% Sherwood funds for a one-year commitment. We said we would relook at it, you know, around this budgetary time, springtime. And so it's looped back around. On my end, I've only been on the board four years, but, you know, I have taken time to both attend JDI meetings, but also try to meet one-on-one with stakeholders that are part of the different offices, departments, and roles within the overall system, just to see where they're at, not just with JDI, but just with collaboration, communication, what, where are there kind of barriers in the system that are preventing us from moving forward? And, you know, we've seen things through the presentations. More recently, we're looking at, you know, those who have been authorized to be released, but they're lacking a placement, right? How can we tackle that more specifically? How can we build capacity for those placements and really look at those, what are the kinds of placements that are needed from group homes to psychiatric facilities for youth, et cetera? So I'm sure some of that is in this report, some of that we know from other conversations. And I do think we need to put strong emphasis on those things that we're seeing now in 2025 and beyond. I agree with Commissioner Rogers, you know, those things that especially fall under our authority and jurisdiction that are pre-adjudicated, that we can do better in regards to handling those youth that are coming in either through JAC, home program, pre-adjudicated in general, lacking placements, what can we do about it and put a stronger emphasis on that? So part of that will be here, a part of it will be our own brainstorming and coming together to see what we need to do in 2025 moving forward. So that is, like I said, related kind of conversation to the resolution that's before us today. Commissioner Frey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In early 2010, maybe, the Administrative Office of Courts and Probation adopted JDI. In a certain way, I, in my view, this is a state, this is sort of a state function. You could argue, you can debate that. We can argue about what our roles should be. That's legitimate. But this is a state function. The other thing that I'm a little bit worried about is that I've been on this board for a while now and I don't have a whole lot of metrics and statistics that I can dig my hands into that indicate that JDI has been just a splashing success. Now, it doesn't mean that it hasn't. I mean, statistics are relative and I might not be always looking in the right place. But I've been, in a lot of these meetings, I've been through some stuff that would indicate that I've got a little bit of experience and I have trouble wrapping my hands around it. Further, some of the stuff that we were talking about earlier, it goes to what we were visiting about. I still believe that we have an appropriations role. What we did, what we decided as a board earlier is we're not going to affect an appropriation for DCSO, and that's our right to do that. And Commissioner Borgson brought up a good point. It's our right to debate that. We can debate it here, too. I'm not saying JDI shouldn't exist. I'm just saying I'm not sure we should fund it. I'm not going to make a, you know, huge deal about it, but I'm going to vote, if the state, if their initiative in 2010, if the Administrative Office of Courts and Probation adopted JDI and they think it's worthwhile, fund it. Fund it to the degree that it needs to be funded. And then, by the way, provide the appropriate metrics that we can actually get our hands wrapped around. Mr. Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
And I'm just going to wrap some stuff around. This is not, and we'll make sure it's not that, but I'm trying to fill in the gaps with it. So I think, I don't, again, to see this report next week, to see what it is, but the fact is, is that JDI was joint state effort, joint state effort that started here in the county. And traditionally, it was done county by county. And I think to Commissioner Frey's point, there's a gargantuan amount of data that actually has come out of JDI. And if you mark JDIs existing when it started 15 years ago, you know, that's one of the biggest philosophies in regards to starting here. I think it may have been part of your tenure on judiciary when it was Senator Ashford, Lathrop, McGill, counsel, you. It was a joint effort because when the agreement was to bring JDI in state, it would start here and spread throughout the state when traditionally it had been, it was county by county. So it was a joint effort that took the population down from 220 to numbers as low as 40s and now it's fluctuated back up. And there were changes implemented in the law that came from that. And so I think that data will show that that played a big role. I think one of the successes is that a lot of the things that happened, they have been institutionalized and they're standard operating procedures, whether it's the identification to the disparities, the data-driven pieces. And now it comes to a point where if this is where the board decides to go, those individuals, and I don't know what that report is like, who was saying it may have served its time. I've said at times up here on this panel that, you know, the state, the state needs to do this. You know, if we decide to go this route and remove JDI, then people have, names have to be told then because there has to be some accountability with that. I mean, I think I tried to play cordial in saying the state, the state, if this goes, data and things are going to point to clear places. And even if JDI is not there, it's not going to replace the fact that people don't have the will to move the piece. You know, we're passing the ball in regards to some issues on this, but the bottom line, whatever comes out of it, and my understanding is people will go where they are with it. I do think there's a place for, you know, the role there, but even if this report comes next week, and I am eagerly anticipating to see it, because if the same effort that goes into the end part of JDI, where nobody is taking responsibility for their role in it, and everybody is questioned when is their point to get pushed, I mean, one of the things that was said from the beginning is that everybody is going to get their day in the sun. And when your day in the sun comes, how are you going to react to it? I mean, quite frankly, there were reports in respects to, that was supposed to be on the objective assessment committee. And the committee, in regards to the state supposedly doing the study, hadn't met. I think that's commitment piece on that end. And so it'll go where it goes, but I think, in the bottom line, I think JDIs had a tremendous piece. I think it should stay in some respect. So I definitely think the position and the data that comes forward should stay. But if the effort ends and it goes into this new plan that's going to come with the same commitment to moving the piece, then, you know, we'll see. But I do know now that JDI is not going and that's the will, that accountability level to me raises up a whole lot of notches. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Third time's the charm for using my request to speak. I do need a little clarification on the resolution. So am I correct that this resolution, if we were to approve it, would thereafter bind us to not fund JDI for the following year?
That is correct.
And am I then, I guess consequently correct, that voting no would bind us to funding JDI for the following year?
I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to vote on it again, so somebody could ask to bring it on July 8th to actually fund the position and then figure out a way to fund it. If it continued, it would be still a state employee if probation wanted it to continue. It's also, you know, a partnership, so that would be what would happen. So kind of yes, kind of no. You still need to bring it back and find a way to fund it.
Okay, but if we were to, okay. So I, I've been on this board for six months, which probably somebody could argue is enough time for me to have gotten my head around these issues, but I'm evidently a slow learner. And despite my efforts, I remain deeply perplexed, if not flummoxed, about the right way forward on some of these matters, except to say that the theme I have heard, and I'll probably wax politically about this more in the near future, but the themes I have heard from so many meetings that I've taken with so many stakeholders since I started is, you know, we don't know why the ball's not moving forward, but it's not. And a lot of people have an idea why it's somebody else's fault, but everybody's long on problems and short on answers. So I hear the arguments on the JDI. I am somewhat skeptical about its efficacy. I suspect it's in part, or perhaps substantially so, due to a recent lack of investment by some of the stakeholders, which is beyond our control. It's unfortunate that it sort of becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy on programs like the JDI. You get out what you put into it. But I, it's unfortunate we have to, we have to hold over on the presentation. I think that would be helpful. I'm likely a no on the resolution today, not, but it's really, I want to be clear, a function of where I'm at in the learning process and that unfortunately, I just don't feel comfortable taking this drastic action. I understand and I respect that some of my colleagues who have had more time with this have seen it in action, might have come to that conclusion. I may very well come to that conclusion, but that's just where I sit right at this moment.
Very good. Any others on this item? Go ahead. Commissioner Borgson?
Well, again, I'm kind of like, trying to wrap my head around it because it's hard if you don't know what the outcome of the report is going to be, what we could, or maybe do with, if JDAI is like gone, the philosophy is still there, but if the process, or not the process, if the position and roles of JDAI are gone and there's something new and we don't know what the new is or what the new could be, but yet we could use the expertise that's there in this new outcome of the report, then I think we're missing our opportunity. So that's where, I mean, if it's going to go away, obviously, I want to thank the people for everything because I think it's been well worth the blood, sweat, and tears on it. But then at the same time, if there's dollars that we could use in a different manner to take care of the issues that we have of moving our youth through the system quicker, then I think we're missing an opportunity. So I'm going like this because I don't know what this is. I don't know what the report says. And so that's my dilemma as to where to, I mean, I'm weighing to vote no, but then at the same time, I don't know because I don't know what the, what the report says we should be doing or where we should be heading. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Rogers?
The last two minutes, I just want to say that, you know, we have the pot, the grant pot, that you can fund it out of. Now, the question really is, you know, do you let, do you let, the process has evolved into the system. It's like standard operated procedures, but there's still a lot of questions with length of stays and other things like that. I mean, I don't know if holding it over hinders it because there's still payment to go into the system. I think we can make that up. But the, you know, my question really is with this, to see that report is, you know, one of the things right now that has been a struggle is what's the extent of data sharing that's going to happen with probation? You know, that, the data piece is the ultimate piece to know where to go with that. And, you know, I'm going to just tell you, as the chair said, the part on our end of pre-adjudication, we have some things on the table and we just need to move. But if you go to this new continuum, and again, I sit in a room again with system points in the system, and every time they're asked, you know, what's going to be done with your point of accountability in the system, and people are just sitting there quiet because they don't want to politically get burned, then I don't know what we're doing with this next phase. Because the fact is, when we need to, when we need to work with each other to do other things, we know there's a way to do it. But the fact is, you know, we can go to this new thing, but unless they show the political will that they want to move, as Brian said, you're going to have another self-fulfilling prophecy because that's what put JDI at the point that we've been sitting at a point with length of stays and other things for eight years and nobody's really been able to get over the hump forward. So I just want to say, there's a way we can get there, there is a source to fund it. The process may go, but I do think there's a conversation to be had about the expertise that's there to some degree. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly on my end, you know, part of the reasoning for putting it on today's agenda was also, you know, the fiscal year just caught up on us pretty quickly. But I do want to honor the desire for the information, which again, it's not that the report was done to replace JDI specifically. It's not going to say, this is what you should do to replace JDI. That's not the purpose of the report, but I do think it is loosely related because it will cover all of the stakeholder meetings, focus groups, and a look at what are the gaps and things that need to be addressed in 2025 and beyond. So I do think they are related. So is there a way on, just on the backend administrative side, to put this on the July 8th agenda, both of them together again, the presentation and the JDI resolution, with the understanding from a payroll technical standpoint that the current formula will just go through the next payroll cycle and we'll handle that on the backend as needed? Is that possible?
Commissioners, my, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, my understanding is that the continued funding of half and half is in the budget, proposed budget for next year. So if the board takes no action and just approves the budget as presented by administration, then it would just continue to be funded half and half. So.
But we haven't approved the budget yet either.
You haven't, but if you approve the budget and you want to pull it back, I don't know that there's any legal reason why you can't pull it back at a later time unless there's a written contract with the state that requires it. The only other thing I would say is, if we're going to fund it out of Sherwood completely, we need to get Sherwood's assurance that we can use the money for that purpose more than half. Because in the past, my experience is, is they want us to have skin in the game on stuff like this. So I would just be careful not to assume that you can use 100% Sherwood funding on it.
Very good. So Lori, when were you planning to have the budget on the agenda? Do you know by hand?
The-
The plan is for July 8th, but.
Oh, really?
It's tentative. Well, I mean, it depends on how long the commissioners need to work through some of those items.
Yeah, we may need more time than that. Yeah, yeah. I'm assuming I will probably lean towards giving us at least one or two more meetings beyond July 8th.
I just want to have it ready for you whenever you guys decide.
Yeah. Yeah. Twenty second maybe, yeah. So again, on the backend, are we able to continue the 50-50 split through the first part or maybe all of July just to make sure we have time to go through this? I want to honor the desire for more information before taking an official vote. I don't see my vote changing nor the resolution changing that I'm putting forth just because of the steam, I think is the energy is going, you know, in a new direction at this point. But to honor my colleague's desire, can we do that? And hold this back till July 8th? Does that make sense?
Commissioners, Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator, I think you could do that, but I think since January, or since July 1st is the beginning of the budget year and because that would be the renewal of this service, I think the board would need to make it clear to the state and to the JDI coordinator that even though it's rolling over effective July 1st, there's no guarantee that it's going to be in the budget when it's approved, whether it be July 27th or the first week in August. We'll do a status quo for now, but there's just no guarantee and they need to know that, that it's going to be included in the next budget.
Yeah, I think they know. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Let's do that and.
One quick other thing, Commissioner Kim Havick, County Administrator, there is a contract for this. This contract ends June 30th. So I don't have a mechanism within our county system to pay anything in July, even if it's in the budget. We would have to do a backdated contract or something along that lines. But I'm just letting people know that that contract ends, which means all funding ends June 30th at this point.
Can we do it like some kind of?
I can do a 30-day addendum and get it to them. Because it wasn't going to be renewed.
Yeah, I'm sure they won't turn down an extension till the end of July if we get some kind of simple addendum extension just to do what we said and also phase it out with a pinch more time. And I know we've gone forward contract list with other services for a pinch of time as well and we've made it work. So let's go ahead and do that. It is very unanimous consensus to also delay this one to July 8th as well from the board. If so, we'll just plan to do that. I'm watching the clock here. We have one more item of substance. And before we go into executive session, Commissioner Fahy, you had a light?
Never mind.
Okay. We'll move forward. Thank you for that. Under community services, we did have one item, a discussion slash action on the 25-26 visitor improvement fund allocation recommendations. I'll first pass it to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
This is the annual approval of the visitor improvement fund grants to community organizations. Just briefly, in the interest of time and the fact that we're holding a hearing on this topic at 2:30 this afternoon, I'll give you an outline. There are 85 grant awards this year totaling $5,2374, ranging in size from 1,500 to 273,000. In your materials, you'll see a list of those and this afternoon we'll go into much more depth. I do see Todd Simon on Zoom, who is Chair of our Committee of Advisors on this. And I want to thank him and the Visitors Promotion Council that he heads for their help in this pretty complex process of dividing these up. I think that we have come back from our pandemic low to kind of a new high point. This is of course based on the revenue derived from the hotel tax. So heads and beds tourism is the driver on all of this. And Todd, thank you for joining us by Zoom.
Thanks, Commissioner. It's an honor to continue to serve the board in this way. So thank you for the opportunity.
Great. We'll see you this afternoon. I would just ask the board to, unless you have some in-depth questions on this, if we could get a resolution and then this afternoon we'll have a full-fledged discussion on the process that we did. I think everybody's kind of familiar that this comes around once a year and how it works.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you are looking to get them approved today, the recommendations, or no?
Yes, if we could. There is a kind of a statutory window here that Catherine, what is the statutory final date?
Catherine Hall, County Administration. It's not a statutory date, but budget, we just typically try to get it done before the board, before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Yes, 9:03 at 2:30 PM.
Okay. Because the recommendations were at least emailed to us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. But yeah, Commissioner Borgeson, comment on that?
Well, again, I feel like we're doing things backwards. If you're having a committee meeting on the recommendations, then we should hold off the approval of them until the following week or two, whatever now, July 8th, to have that discussion.
If I, if I could just clarify, they're not on the recommendations for this year. We're doing what we've always done. These are, these are going forward if people have proposals going forward. We've already been through this entire process, I don't know, for a number of years. This is, the committee hearing is to talk about the future.
Okay. Well, I misunderstood what your committee meeting is for then. So again, I think there's more, I mean, I have more questions again this year with what we're funding and with time limits. That's frustrating. I think there's someone here who wants to speak on this. So, and we've, I know that we've tried in the past to get this done during budget time, but we have extended that sometimes up until September or October before we actually approved this many, 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 many years ago. So again, if it takes us a little longer to go through them and approve them, then I think that that's worth that discussion because this again is a lot of money that we're going, we're going to be approving as a board to fund various community operations for visitors' promotions.
Commissioner Kavanaugh and Catherine, would there be any leeway or willingness to push back to July 8th or?
I don't have any problem with that. You know, I share some of the concerns. I don't think if anybody goes through this, that everybody's going to say 100% on 100% of these things. So, you know, I've had this discussion with Todd and board members and Catherine. So I'm probably more familiar than most people, but I have no problem with everybody taking a deep look at this and going forward. Nothing's perfect, but, you know, these people have done a lot of hard work on this. And I think, you know, all things considered, we're at a place where it should come before the board, but that's fine. I don't think that will cause us major problems with Catherine.
Catherine Hall, County Administration. No, this board's approved them, I believe, in July as well.
One thing that we came across is the funding mechanism that's used for this is the fiscal year funding mechanism. And so we don't have absolutely final receipts until the end of this month. And so it actually would benefit us to get a, you know, completely accurate number, hopefully. And I've talked to Lori about this before. It's a little bit like we're operating on a couple of different time schedules. So this might actually help in terms of doing that.
Very good. So Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you're okay with it, then I'll ask the board if they're okay with pushing back this item to July 8th. Does everybody have consensus on that? Not the meeting, but this agenda item, the approval of the recommendations to July 8th. Yep.
Yes. Recommendations are contained in here.
Just to give a little more time to ask a few questions and discuss the item. Not that there's anything detrimental. We know Todd, Simon and the committee have done a robust job in reviewing these and giving the recommendations. We just want to allow some questions to happen and we're a little bit short on time today. So.
And we'll have a robust discussion of this at 2:30. We invite the board to participate in that along with a PowerPoint that Catherine spent some time on to give us an overall view of the whole thing.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kavanaugh and committee. Todd, thank you for being on Zoom as well. Commissioner Borgeson, something?
But for your committee, we're not going to be able to discuss the current recommendations because this is going into the future.
It has two items if you look at the agenda.
I did.
Okay. It has this and it has the future. It has this award. It's contained in the PowerPoint. If you come to the committee, you'll see.
But you're assuming that these were approved today, so that's.
No, I'm not. I'm not assuming that at all. All I'm saying is this is what the committee did that we established and we asked them to do. So here's what the committee did.
So we can ask questions about.
Absolutely.
At 2:30?
At 2:30. If it's on the agenda, then.
If it's on the agenda, then it's done in an hour.
Okay. But if we had to prove it, you were just going to discuss what was approved?
Yeah, yeah. This is why, this is not a problem if we do it this way.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to speed us along here. The only other committee item was human resources with weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Just a brief reminder, there is no meeting next week on the July 4th week. We will return on July 8th, Tuesday, July 8th. We do have a need for executive session for the purposes of contract negotiation and legal advice. Does that cover everything, Patrick and Teresa? Yes? Okay. Very good. Motion by Morgan, second by Friend for executive session. We'll take a quick vote on that.
Real quick before that, we, did we, I'm very sorry, Mr. Chair, did we accept the budget report under Finance?
If we didn't, we will accept the budget report under Finance, item A1, as presented.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you. And then the motion for executive session and second word by who again?
Was it Morgan and Friend?
Thank you. All right.
And Commissioner Borgeson, your committee is in 9:03?
Yes.
Right? Okay. So we're going to do our best to be at 9:03 by 1 if possible. If not, a little bit later, we will be there shortly.
Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes 7-0.
I see. That goes to the chair.
Yes.
Uh? Yeah.
There you go.
I'll give that just to your yard.
I guess actually. But I'm not gonna.
Yes.
Sir.
I told Pride we're gonna have it. But uh, I thought it was. Did everybody yes?
Exactly.
So if you wanna.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson to reconvene and adjourn, second by Commissioner Morgan. Motion passed seven to zero. The meeting adjourned at one seventeen PM.